Second minutes and Commissioner Fort, do you have any changes to the agenda?
Uh, no.
Okay, public comments. As a reminder, we have three minutes. It is not a give and take. It is just you expressing your opinion to the board very appropriately. So Ms. Pape.
Thank you. So the way this meeting is structured, you have public comment in the beginning. So I don't know why NWAAC is on the agenda. And I only know what I've heard board members say in the community about why it's on the agenda. So for at least this time, I have to suppose that information is true. So that is what my comments are regarding. I really don't see at this point in sharing with you the importance that I find our NWAAC team to me, both as a parent and a community member, because I've shared that at length with you and it feels that it has fallen on deaf ears. So at least for the time being, I'm gonna skip that point. But what I do want to say is that I see the team achieving the milestones that we have committed to by building the number of swimmers on the team, increasing its revenue through the increased dues which were voted in and the swim team families have been paying. And I think the momentum is building with our swim meets as was exemplified last weekend. And I do believe that ethically and legally that you have an obligation to engage in discussion with the community if you are indeed considering cutting the team yet again. And we as community members deserve the opportunity to engage in dialogue, learn your interests, and have the courtesy and respect for you to hear ours. That's my request. So as government officials, you have an obligation to lead objectively and govern transparently with our tax dollars. So bottom line, I'm requesting that we need a few representatives of the swim team with you to engage in this discussion before any final decisions are made.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Merrill.
Yeah, so thanks for having me here tonight and also it's really nice to be on this side, no, on that side. That being said, I'm here to express my concern about the levy coming up. Next year, we have to go to the election and it's kinda hard to be talking about that right now when we're all having a little election fatigue. But next year, we go for our M&amp;O levy. And just so everybody's on the same page, Central Woodbee Fire and Rescue, North Woodbee Fire and Rescue, Oak Harbor Fire Department, Woodbee Health, the school district, and then finally, North Woodbee Parks Recreation are all asking for levy lifts on the same ballot next year. Whether you work in a historic, if you look at historical data, whether it be city, county, state governments, when you put up services against each other, we all know who gets cut first and funded last. We're all fools if we think it's not the parks or the senators. Well, like I said, whether you're in the city, the county, the government, or we're special tax district, we're the last ones to get those money. Unfortunately for this district, as we all know, without that M&amp;O levy, we will cease to exist as the district, which is sad because we know how important this facility is and this district is for the whole community here. It serves a wide variety of interests from the seniors to the kids that are in the pool right now, to the lap zones, the military, to the swim team. And we can't forget the dock park folks. Mike would love us if he was here that use our dock park. And then there's the Little League folks that use the Little League fields and then there's folks that come in and use the softball fields. This district needs to survive. All right? In the past, the biggest and only supporters of getting the levy passed historically have been whom? The swim team parents and the kids. In the parades and from the stores and towns, they're the ones that have held the signs out, passed out the literature that said save our pools. They're the ones that have stood out on the street corners and done that. Ms. Pape, just mentioned that we've taken a dues increase. No problem. Let's do it. We've taken a cut in the travel fund. No problem. Let's do it. We look at it, the pool right now, we see lane markers. That who bought? Yeah, the Booster Club. We see a computer that's there for the coach duties. Who bought that? Oh yeah, the Booster Club. And more importantly, we also see that who's gonna probably pick up the tab for the coach's travel fund? Oh yeah, the Booster Club. No other program that this district has does that. No other program. Zero. There's programs that spend a lot of money, but that's not the point. The point is to make the district viable so we're here. Because if we're not here, then people lose jobs and the community loses their resources. And that's important. So Carolyn asked for open dialogue. I've asked for open dialogue before I left the board and I think that's really important. No matter what you do at the club, I think a kick in the junk is always a little easier to take sometimes, I guess, if you know it's coming. I don't know, that can be debated. But I think transparency and open dialogue would help. And you never, you know, my dad used to tell me this, he was a great man. He says, "Shiny, you wanna be a leader someday?" He goes, "Let me give you a word of advice." And he was my hero. He told me, you ask for people on one hand and you can poop in the other. And at the end of the day, people are left with a handful of you-know-what. You gotta be really careful when you do that with people. Because if you ask and ask and ask and don't give anything back, they might start throwing that at you. And he goes, nobody wants that. So we want dialogue. We wanna support this district, but gotcha, we don't wanna do it if you're gonna cut our club. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
Hi, I am also a parent of a competitive swimmer here involved in the NWAAC program. And from things that I've heard, so some of it at board meetings over the, in the past since I've been a swim parent and others that I've just heard, word of mouth, I am uneasy about the future of competitive swimming here on Woodbee Island, which consists solely, of course, of what is done at this pool. There's no other facility that's doing competitive swimming on Woodbee Island. And it really relies on you folks for it to be at all in existence. And that obviously comes down to funding issue. The most recent funding issue that came to light, and as Sean mentioned, it was the travel funding for the coach. It was concerning to me in that I was at the meeting when the extra fee to supplement the coach's travel budget was placed on the parents of the swimmers. And we've all been paying that now for a while. And then recently, I heard that that's not just a supplement, that's it. That's the only travel funding he's gonna get. Which concerns me especially just based on the fact that we just had a successful meet this weekend, Karen mentioned it, that brought in $8,000 of revenue to the district. Plus, I think there's 800 bucks worth of concessions sold or so, according to the account that I talked to about it, I just got a round figure from him. And that income to the district was based entirely upon good relationships that were built by Coach Taylor on travel. If we wouldn't have that income, if we hadn't traveled to other meets, supported other teams' meets, so that they would have a good idea of coming to support our meet. And that, I think, should be considered in his travel, in the idea of funding his travel. The parents of the swimmers are very well organized now. We ran a very successful meet. That $8,000 is proof of our organization, in addition to the other things that have been mentioned, the lane lines and the flags that have been purchased and the computer that's been purchased. And we're organized, we care, we've proven ourselves. And just in order to recognize that, I would add my request that the board have an open dialogue, some event scheduled, have an open dialogue with parents of the NWAAC swimmers so that we can talk about the future funding of this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And I forgot to say at the very beginning, present at this meeting is Commissioner Singleton, myself, Commissioner Holly, and Commissioner Fort. Missing are Commissioner Hoffmeyer and Commissioner Frosch, who was sick tonight. But we do have quorum. And Commissioner Fort, you're the minute guy for tonight. We run back to the beginning.
As long as we've got this on YouTube, I'll be able to do it.
Well, we're recording, so it should be good. Okay. Next agenda item, board issues. Commissioner Singleton, do you have any issues?
No issues.
Commissioner Fort?
No.
And I have none. Okay, approval of minutes. We did not get either the August 25th or the September 22nd minutes, but we did get the special meeting minutes for September 7th.
No chair.
Commissioner Singleton?
I move that we approve the minutes from the 7th September special meeting as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve as written the minutes for September 7th special meeting. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed, passed unanimously. Voucher review.
Commander Chair.
Commissioner Singleton?
I move that we approve District vouchers 7298 through 7344 in the amount of $32,674.30 and conduct payroll transfers from M&amp;O account to payroll account in the amount of $39,141.62.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve District vouchers 7298 through 7344 in the amount of $32,674.30 and approve the payroll transfer from the M&amp;O account to payroll account in the amount of $39,141.62. Discussion?
4754, Ellen I claim, what was that?
That was a employee who lost checks from two and three years ago. And when we found the checks, we went by what I'm told is always done here, whenever the, when money, whenever paychecks, the company that does our checks has to either cancel a lost check or one doesn't get cashed within 180 days, that they are, they charge us a fee to retake the check back. And then they'll give us that check back less the fee. So our belief was, and I believe it had been practiced as well, that that was passed on to the employee. So if you had a $50 check and it costs $25 to take the check back, you get $25 for the check back. So the employee filed an Ellen I claim. In that, we discovered that in fact, in the 2006, I don't know the name of the act, but it's basically the employee, that we have to pay that in full to them because they work, they earn money, and we can't pass on anything to them. So that's what this is. The total that she did not get was $47.0 whatever, there is $0.54. What we're gonna do to rectify that is, beginning in January, all employees will be, and this is legal, we've checked this, all employees will be required to use direct deposit unless they can show us that the bank that they use charges them to use direct deposit, then we can't force them to do it. That's how we're gonna rectify that.
Thank you.
Did you learn?
Yes, we did.
Here's Sesco new concept products, I assume. It's what we got cleaning materials and trash bags from. I don't remember ever seeing them as a, as a, somebody that we got products from before.
Which number is that?
7336 and 7341. Trash bags and cleaning materials. I just wondered if they were somebody new.
It's probably someone new, but maybe they got a better price for it, for what they were doing.
Okay.
So we have, we have three different charges here. So there's a USA Swim registration charge, a 2017 club application charge, and a USA Swim registration charge. How are those, how are those different? I'm certain that they are, but how are they different?
Well, the two USA Swim registrations are just whenever the batches got sent in at different times.
So, okay, sorry, my question, so they represent individual payments from individuals?
Yes.
Okay.
And the $300 one, the club application, that's our fee that we pay every year to P&amp;S to be part of Pacific Northwest Swimming for those that don't have P&amp;S.
The only other thing I think that I was a little confused by is, so we're at the end of, and maybe this is up here, the problem is here, but our Visa cards, they're all the statements from August. And it seems like they should be the ones from September at this point.
We don't, the September ones don't show up until the end of September.
Which was a month ago.
Well, they would be in the voucher report because they would have, this is a voucher report for September, they would have been paid after they came in at the end of September.
I must, I must not understand something because this is stuff we haven't paid yet. So how, I think there's something, perhaps there's something I haven't, we can take it off.
The vouchers are paid.
We're, yeah, we're, the vouchers have been paid. We're approving the vouchers. So this got paid, but it's like, you're always like a month behind with your own credit card statements behind ours. And so therefore, being two months behind makes total sense since we're, this is what was paid last month by us. It makes sense to me.
Okay. If it makes sense to you, I will reprocess and come back to you individually if I still have a question.
All right.
I have a question on the Visa cards. The days in, two days for coach hotel.
Yeah.
That wasn't on last month's, 'cause I checked. And so it's on this month, but it's not recorded, indicated in the P&amp;L. There's no increase in the P&amp;L on the coach's travel. I noticed from last month to this month.
I'm not sure what you mean by it's not indicated in the P&amp;L.
The P&amp;L for the coach's travel for last month was the same, probably the same as it was this month, 41, what, 24? Or 3124 so far this year if he spent on travel. And that's what it was last month. But we've got a bill here for days in for two weeks, 167, 20. Why isn't that added on to the?
Because this is a bill from July.
But it wasn't in July's. If I went back and looked at last, last month's P&amp;L and last month's, and it wasn't indicated on those anywhere in the Visa card. So this is a new, this is new addition. So it should be added to the 41, 3124.
I'll verify that, but I think it's already in there.
I don't think so. That's why I double-checked it.
All right, let me mention that Commissioner Hoffmeyer has arrived. Thank you. And we're talking about the charges and stuff. On the, the stencils and ink, what was that for?
Whenever during the shutdown, we do.
Oh, okay. Okay. And when we redid the locker keys, was that something that people had lost them or broken them? I can't remember why we redid the locker, this much locker, this many locker keys.
Over the, over time, it's been either they've been lost or they were broken.
Okay.
And so we went in there during the shutdown.
So for most of them, had we gotten the $25 per patron that?
I can't answer that because I don't, most of these were, when I first got here, there were almost no keys on that keyboard anyway. So I do not know that answer.
All right. And we have a, I was very confused by this. Treasurer's report, the maintenance page or this thing? You looking? Okay. Cause it says, maintenance expenditure total $60,000 and something, and then it says minus that. Calculated total $53,000. So I'm not exactly sure, I don't remember having a large sum of money in maintenance. I don't remember that there was, and I was gonna look at last month and I forgot. It's like, it's not like the other pages, so I'm not sure.
It's a carryover from this one.
That's the, this is the one in account.
Yeah, this is the summary of this.
Oh, okay, thank you. So, but it's, okay, all right.
Look correct to me.
Okay. Thanks, never mind. Did you have any questions on any of this? Any other questions?
Do not.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded and I'm, I don't really, I don't even think it's good, about the District vouchers approving and the payroll transfer from M&amp;O to payroll. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
It's approved unanimously. Committee reports, Clover Valley Committee, do you have?
We weren't able to meet and we need to reschedule that hopefully for this next week, but we weren't able to meet last week for weather. The week we're gonna do it was raining.
Okay. Program review committee, we did not meet and the, but the reason, what we have to discuss is, we were stymied at the subcommittee meeting because basically, the three members, two of us thought one thing, one member thought another, and we just have to put it to a vote by the board and make a decision. And it, the only thing it is, the question for today is, is the coach's salary, is that an O and M part of O and M or is it an NWAAC expense? And I couldn't believe we even had to discuss it because to me, it's an NWAAC expense. And the, the director is the one who doesn't agree. And he said, no, it's an O and M expense because it's a program of the, of the district, which I'm not disagreeing with. He's an employee of the district, which I also don't disagree with. However, in my opinion, because all the coach does is NWAAC, it has to be considered an NWAAC expense. That's my opinion, and I'm gonna let, we're gonna do this, I'm gonna let Kaz talk for a couple of minutes on why he thinks it's an O and M expense. And then each one of you can make a comment or two. And then we're just gonna do a straight up or down, yes or no vote to, is the coach's expense, is the coach's salary an NWAAC expense? Yes or no? Okay? Is that, is that clear to everybody? What we, that's, it doesn't say NWAAC is bad, it doesn't say we're getting rid of NWAAC, it doesn't say anything. We just, so that we can go back in the subcommittee and continue to discuss it. And in fact, over the last, I don't know, week and a half, I've been talking about this and we are planning to get together with the NWAAC parents and talk about, not the future of NWAAC, but how do we move forward? No, there's no, no discussion. I'm just telling you right now. Okay, so, Mr. Executive Director.
Well, frankly, when our meeting got canceled, I would have thought that this would have been something that we as a subcommittee would have brought here as a recommendation to the board. And now it's up for a vote and we've never had as a subcommittee a discussion about it going to be canceled. So I'm not, I'm not exactly sure of why this has come up for a vote when we didn't even talk about it in the subcommittee.
We did talk about it and there was, you didn't agree. And you are so passionate about your side and it's like...
We did not have a subcommittee meeting though. We called it up, canceled.
Yes. Because I wasn't gonna meet with the swim coach.
You're right.
Commander Chair, please tell me.
I think, I think what, I think what she's referring to is, I mean, this, this has been just an ongoing discussion. So I, while, I think what you're saying is that you would have appreciated that we talked about it as a group before it was brought to the board, I think that's what you're saying. I think, I think, and I'm, I'm not, I, I understand that's what you're saying and that's what I'm trying to represent. I think what she's saying is, is that there have been multiple instances and so I think what she's trying to do is solve what we think is the problem. Perhaps it was or wasn't approached the right way or the best way, but, but I think, I think it's in the effort to solve a problem. If we, rather, I'll just shut it down.
Okay. So are you gonna talk about it being O and M versus or not?
Sure, I'd be glad to. Whenever I, back in January, whenever I started calculating all the operating costs and I met with you two, one night at Flyers before you came back and joined the commission, then I met with you and Joanne one day out here in a, in a meeting there, I said, this is how I determine the operating costs. Because I was like, all right, what are we gonna do? How do we determine what it costs to run the district out here? No one, before I did it, to my knowledge, no one knew what it cost to turn the lights on every morning. We know now. I explained the methodology. I never heard one pushback, one ounce of pushback to the methodology I, excuse me, I'm talking right now, Commissioner? Whenever I presented that, I heard nothing about it. Then, whenever I came up, we went to the swim school and private swim lessons, we used the same methodology that I had described to you two. I know that I never heard one thing about it. I never heard one thing about it. It was all good. But when it comes to a specific program here that I'm, keep in mind, I have no vested interest. I don't have a kid on the NWAAC. I don't, I don't. So, but I'm, I was hired to turn this place around and I'm not gonna willingly, I can, you guys can vote, do whatever you want to tell me to do and I'll have to do it, but I'm not willingly going to treat one program differently than any other program in here. And all the other programs are measured by a certain way and this program should be measured the same way. And in that, in that lane cost, which it comes down to a lane cost per hour, which is how the operating expenses are spread out across the program, the salaries of the senior staff are in there. They have been since the beginning of this year. And that includes mine, Matt's, coaches, Julie's, Joanne's, Jessica's and Erica before Jessica took over that pool. So all of that's put in there and it's factored into the total operating cost divided by the number of operating hours to come up with how I determine what it costs to run this place. And his costs is in there. Now, we've gone through a couple of programs already where it was done that way. And now, because we don't agree with, with something, it gets done differently for a different program. Well, then are we gonna go back and do the swim school and all the other programs and spread Jessica's across that? Which by the way, my rough numbers, well, the price of one class of swim school will go up from $6 to $10 to $12. That's one class, there are eight classes in a session. So we're talking about $96 a session. If that's what the commission wants to do, then that's what we do. But we will not, I will not willingly have one program measured metrically differently than any other program in here. So it's up to you how you guys want me to do it. And I'll do it that way. And I won't have to like it, but I'll do it. But I do not agree with the way you guys are trying to go.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so back in January, what you were talking about was the swim, the swim school.
Yes.
You didn't talk about anything else. You talked about the swim school. And you came up with a $63 an hour thing to cover the front desk and the two lifeguards. And that's how you figured out the lane hours. You didn't include anything else in that. So I disagree with that. Number two. Number two, you and I have discussed this before, the swim team for our, the deficit from, for the swim team first, of income versus cost for 2011 to 2000 through 2015, it is $217,000. Back when this pool was built, it was indicated that the programs would fund themselves and maintenance and operation levy would be go to maintenance of the pool and paying the certain administrative costs. Now it's paying, it's paying for. Swim team, it's, there are other programs, you're right, that are, that need to come into line, including water aerobics and other things. They all need, programs should pay for themselves. Before I took this job, I went over to talk to Anna Cordes to find out why they don't have any trouble passing the levy. And I talked to the lady and she filled me in. They, about, about 10 years ago, they... And I talked to the lady, and she filled me in. They, about, about ten years ago, they were having trouble for the very same reasons that we're having trouble. Programs were not supporting paying their full price, specifically the swim team. Now the swim team apparently covers their own expenses, they pay for their own coach, et cetera, et cetera. That's why we had trouble not being able to pass the levy. A lot of programs, school, swim team is important. Youth activities are important. All youth activities are important. Why is the swim team receiving so much tax support versus every other youth activity in, in, in our district, which doesn't receive anywhere near that much of tax support?
Is that a question to me, or are you still-
No, it's just a statement.
Well, no, it sounded like an interrogative, not imperative.
You, you're not asking him a question, are you, or are you?
No, I'm not. I was just basically, uh, my first statement was, was basically, what he said in January had nothing to do with other programs.
What I said in January, Commissioner, was that-
And you can listen to the-
I can listen to it, I know that I said it, Commissioner, so I don't have to listen to it. I know what I said because I know what I did. I count, in that swim school, there's a lane cost, and in the lane cost per hour that's in there comes the salaries of the senior staff. It was in there then, it's been in there all year long, that's the way I have done it. It is exactly, and then, sir, you can go back and check it yourself. I know what I did because I'm the one that did it.
You never can, it's indicated that the coach was a senior staff at that time, it was later.
Everybody calm, stop, calm down. Gentlemen, stop! Okay, we don't need to have raised voices, 'cause I, I will tell you-
Then you'll call me a liar.
I'm not-
The next time I'll have a lawyer here. If you call me a liar again, I'll have a lawyer.
I haven't called you a liar ever.
He didn't, he didn't call you a liar, because I will tell you in January, I don't think I knew that the swim coach's salary was involved in that thing, because in my mind, he's the N WAC swim coach, that's where his cost belongs. I didn't know until, it was somewhere in the middle of the year-ish, when we were discussing it, that it was like, I found out that you had the swim coach's salary involved in that. It, it still, it didn't make sense then, it still doesn't make sense to me. That's all.
Madam Chair, can we have a point of order here, which is, we're going through the commissioners-
Yes.
And they're, you haven't spoken yet.
Commissioner Ford, you're done. Commissioner Singleton?
That, he is Commissioner Hoffmeyer.
Sorry, Commissioner Hoffmeyer, thank you.
That was weird.
That, sorry.
First of all, I suppose I enjoyed that the arrows weren't getting shot at me for once. Second of all, we're not at war with you, you're not at war with us, nobody's getting sued. Um, here's the deal. I wasn't part of the board that hired the director. I thought there was people that were maybe better at parliamentary procedure and open government practice, et cetera. That said, he was hired as a money person, and even though I disagree with quite a bit of what I have heard tonight, he was hired as a money person, I don't think it's our job to micromanage, and I won't be going against him on this. However, everything's an open book, and there are employment evaluations that come up, and that, that, that's what I believe our job as court members are, is to just let things unfold as they will and handle things as they need. And the last two or three meetings have been a little hostile, and I concur with Commissioner Singleton, I hope things can settle down a little. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Singleton?
So, sorry, I'm gathering my thoughts here a little bit. Um, I, I guess first of all, I would just say, I would, I would certainly appreciate it if, if we could all try to take a breath when, I mean, we, we need to treat each other respectfully, um, and, and I would hope that we can continue to do that. Um, but I, I believe there is a disconnect here, and, um, the disconnect is, and, and I actually recall saying this to you at one point, that, um, a, a list of assumptions when you build something in. So, so math is, is, is only correct to the person who's doing it in some places, or accounting, because this is a cost, and, you know, this is the cost. And so, so for example, when we looked at certain program expenses, well, where did you get this number? Well, where did you get this number? Well, I included A, B, and C. Well, I included A, B, and D. And, and so, what I might come up with, what you might come up with, might be true to both of us, but different numbers. And so, because, I, I think that there was an assumption made on your part that we understood, and on our part, there was a, there was a different assumption. Um, I'm, I'm not trying to just be long-winded about this, but I'm, I'm trying to bring us back to, um, it was an honest mistake on both parts. Um, I, I firmly believe that, it was an honest mistake. And, and what we were, I, I think what the attempt here to do was to say, hey, let's put this to bed, right? I think that was, I, I'm surprised, frankly, that this has escalated as quickly as it has, and, um, I hope we can back off of that and try to do the right thing, whatever that means. Um, if, if we think that it's, it's a better course of action, um, to have the discussion as a subcommittee, then, then let's do that. I mean, that's, that's my opinion. Um, then let's do that, because I, I don't, um, no one deserves to feel disrespected, no one deserves to feel, um, as if their character's being called into question. Uh, even as much as, as, as some of us might disagree with one another, none of us deserves that. And, and obviously you included, everyone here included, so I, I'd rather that we took a different approach to this. We say, we still may disagree, but, um, I'd like us to respect each other and disagree if, if we need to, if we can't find an agreement. So, um, that's what I prefer to do.
Okay, so anyone else has any other comments before I ask the question? And this is not, we're not asking for a motion, I'm just asking the question, raise your hand. Do you think the coach's, um, salary is an expense of N WAC? Signify by raising your hand.
In the middle, I, I think that, but I wouldn't vote that way, so.
Okay, then don't, then put, it's, we're just trying to move forward in the, you know, so it's only, it's two to two.
I'm abstaining from this, 'cause I think what I just said, I believe, which is that we should have, we should have the discussion. Um, I, I felt like that's what I heard, and I'm trying to be responsive to that, so.
And in my opinion, I've, we've had the discussion, and it was kind of like a no, 'cause I've discussed this with, but, okay, then, the answer is no, it doesn't pass, or it's not, the answer is immaterial, if it's-
I'm, I'm not sure that that was really a legitimate-
All I wanted was to move forward, and now it's like, we're not.
I understand that, and I think the moving forward is to, first of all, I feel like there's some fences, I'm, I'm sorry, if I, but I, I feel like there's some fences that need to be amended here. So, I, I'd really, I, I actually think we, it is worth our time to be, um, and, and I, and I think that, you know, that the healing circle is, is, is right here, um, amongst the three of us to, to come back and agree to something, or to agree to disagree to something. Is that, is that fair?
Yep. Okay, Levy Committee.
Are you okay with that? Okay, thank you.
Uh, we met, and as I recall, didn't really get much accomplished, but we're gonna meet next. We've been meeting on a monthly basis, and-
We didn't have any civilians show up.
That's true.
We need non-board members to show up and participate on the levy committee.
Yeah, so, we are having-
Ex-commissioners with a lot of knowledge would be good.
Yeah, what would you like us to do?
Do it now?
What do you got for us?
Feeling good.
Well, you, we are not allowed to- Well, we're not allowed to promote the pool, promote the pool levy as board commissioners, so it has to be done by the, by the civilian community.
Many of us in this room are familiar with the levy. I mean, I'm from the school, he's from the-
When's the levy due, we are?
It's, it's due November of next year.
So, the next levy subcommittee meeting is 3:00 PM on the fourteenth of November in this room. Anyway.
What, what kind of outreach are you guys looking to do to get the community involved, so that you don't get involved?
Well, we actually put some stuff on the internet and some requesting people to, and, and I know it's, people don't look at that much, but-
Oh, I read the whole thing.
Yeah, oh, good.
Yeah, finish this.
Okay, um, stop, let's, okay. Action item, review. Alright, um, from April, Executive Director, to look into using the points for purchasing employee incentives or other items for the district. Did you look, the credit cards, you know, we have all those like thousands of points?
One of the things we purchased was a DVD player up there.
Oh, okay.
We have a, we sell a lot of points, and Joanne and Julie and Jessica and I are gonna look at the, continue to look at those. We've got a, uh, like a hot thing, so that we can, for people that want to buy a cup of noodles or something heated with water, that we can heat water up pretty quickly.
Oh, like a microwave?
Uh, it, it would be functional, a good one, a microwave, but it wouldn't, it's like one of those little hot pot things.
Oh, okay. Um, ED to add annual goals to the quarterly reviews, and I don't remember the annual goals being mentioned at the last quarterly review.
It was done in the, um, budget revision.
It was? 'Cause I don't remember seeing, I, I don't think that our annual goals were at all mentioned. But, just as a reminder, so next time we do, um- Come?
I have the presentation that I gave, so I'm-
I, I just said I don't remember. That doesn't mean it didn't happen, so, okay. Um, you were to forward the Blue Hair and Booster Club MOA draft to the board. Did that happen? 'Cause I don't remember getting anything like that. The Blue Hair and Booster Club.
No, because, because they had a change of officers, and, and we don't have that, yeah.
Okay, don't for-
Actually, Madam Chair, I, I think once we understood, um, the, the charter of it differently, we, I, I don't, I don't know that we determined that that was necessary. I mean, that's-
I, I believe you're probably right, but I, no, I don't, it must be, 'cause I haven't done it.
That was, that was fantastically absolute, uh, conditional language.
Yes, it was. But there is, there is not one in effect, put them all in, so.
Okay, are we gonna have one?
I will talk to the Boosters Club about that.
Okay.
And what, what I thought I was saying was that we determined that there was no reason to have one, but-
Their, their char, their, their charter is, is, um, is, is their legal documents document, so I don't know. I'm with you, I don't know what purpose it'll serve, but if, if, if the commission wants to have it.
No, if, if we don't need one, then we don't need one.
No, I, I think it was through the process of, of education, if you will, um, that we determined that there wasn't a purpose, right? Initially, we thought that there was one, and then it was kind of a, oh, okay, they're chartered to do this, that's different from, I, I'm, I'm not trying to stir any pots or anything, but it was a little bit different than what we thought it was going to be, and therefore we did not, it was kind of a, oh, never mind. Uh, honestly, so.
Okay, from seven September, um, we needed to remove our list differently on the budget, the sick pay and executive leave, and I saw you did that, that's good. And then vacation pay, it is a liability to the district. And I'm wondering, and it occurred to me while I was, um, so it's, it's still on the budget, but are we, are we somehow gonna start a, a fund somewhere that will take that money that we owe to people and stick it so that it's there when they leave? 'Cause if someone dies or leaves, we have to pay it to them, so we might as well have it in a reserve fund somewhere that's ready to be paid to them. Especially if people aren't taking their leave. If they're taking their leave, then good, we don't need to, you know.
I would like to, to get that, but I, I, I don't see a problem with figuring out a way to make sure that that money is available if someone like, like me or someone else was to resign. Yes, sir?
Well, I, I kind of agree with her, because otherwise, it's budgeted for this year, but then, if it's not used this year, we go, we do next year, we have another budget that doesn't account for that.
Yeah.
So, we need to really, if it's budgeted for this year, take it out of this year, put it in some sort of separate fund, and keep building that up. If they, if they eventually use the, the leave or the vacation, we can take it back out, but rather than every year, this vacation is, is, is not really indicating how much deficit we have in the vacation fund.
Well, yeah, it actually does.
Do we add it up each year? Increase it?
Well, in, in, in the past, it hasn't been done, but it is being done now. So, in the, in the rollover to, um, in the 2017 budget, yes, it'll, it'll show the accrued vacation of everyone in there, which is the financial obligation to us.
One way or the other.
So you'll put that in the budget that way?
Yes.
Okay, and that's, that's one way of doing it too. Or it's, whatever way you want, I just wanna make sure we, we don't run up with, uh, what happened with Erica, and, um, suddenly we had to pay her how much we had to pay.
There's no reason why, uh, your, your suggestion is, is perfectly valid. It could be, we could, I could pick any one of those four funds that we use and use it for that.
Yeah.
And the mon, the funds are just what we named them, is what I found out. So, I could pick the bond fund and put a, and, and park it in there, and at the end of the year, if no one uses it, well, the, the next year gets put into it, and whenever they leave, we can yank it from there to cover the vacation time we would go somewhere.
The way, the way I've seen that done, someone, I wonder if Commissioner Singleton may concur, especially with companies where, where you're allowed to, to sell that leave, you know, for, for cash. Um, sometimes, quite often, you know, as that all accrues, instead of, instead of that being a liability, sometimes it's moved to an asset that's, you know, especially an employer with more employees, towards tucked away in a CD, maybe, maybe getting reasonable interest sometimes. So, that's something that I possibly wonder.
It's hard to get any interest anymore.
Well, except, if, if you have a hapless on employees, they go a hundred dollars or two hundred dollars or something like that.
In a bigger corporation, that would, that would be a viable thing, but where there are only three of us in the-
Three?
Well, five.
Okay, five.
Five of us that actually accrue.
Six, five, okay.
And most of them only accrue one week, and they can only, they get one week a year, and they can accrue, they can't have more than two in the book, so if they get to the eleven working days, then they stop accruing until they use some, and then they can continue to accrue.
Okay, thank you.
I can, I'll, I'll come up with a plan to have money, it'll be annotated in the budget, what the actual number is.
Liability is, okay.
Yeah, our liability is, and then I'll have, I'll have a plan on where we keep the money.
Okay. Um, ED was to check line item number 115, medical expenses. The actual expended amount from June 30th was seventy, almost eight thousand dollars. The annual amount budgeted, which should be half, was thirteen thousand five hundred. Do you remember that?
That was covered in a previous staff report, I believe. But I believe the answer to that is that, um, a late, like we got with the-
Oh, late billing?
We had a late bill from the company, from the healthcare provider, and it ended up in this year's.
Uh, Executive Director, to clearly show the offset of the N WAC swimsuit expenditures in the revenue, and I, I noticed that they didn't exactly match, so, is that? 'Cause it was, I assumed it was from, where is it? Do you know what I'm talking about, though? Do you remember that being discussed?
I think you're talking about the, um, the suits that, that got-
So, N WAC apparel, special order.
Yeah, it's special order.
And so it shows budgeted, and then exactly that amount, but then there was, as a, um, income, N WAC swim accessories retail. So I didn't-
Special, and then, in act, in actuality, that should have just been in swim accessories retail here. It should have been, I'm not sure why a special link was created. That's where it should have been all along. So, what is, what is the offsetting thing you're looking to?
I just, that was the, what we asked you to do was to clearly show the offset of the N WAC swimsuit expenditures in the revenue, 'cause we had noticed when we were looking at the budget that it, they didn't, there wasn't an offset. There was a bigger expense than income or some, I forget now which it was, but it was, it, it didn't show an offset, and it was, it's a pass-through, so it's not supposed to cost us more money than you get. And it should be labeled the exact same thing and shown in both revenue and expense.
So, you show, uh, to make sure I'm seeing the number you're seeing, on the expense side, you're showing 596.76?
Yep.
Is that correct?
Yep.
And then, so I'm showing on the revenue side for swim accessories retail, I'm showing 709.
Yes.
So that's, it exceeds the expense.
But since it's not labeled, we were, we didn't know that that, is that the exact same thing?
But it would be.
It would be if it had been down here and coded appropriately and into the, into the swim accessories retail, so then you would have, the swim accessories retail would match each other, and that, we'll, we'll fix that. That's where it should have been.
And higher revenue is always better than, you know, higher expense, but, um, that was, that was the question.
Okay, does that, does that answer your question?
No, 'cause it's, it's not.
Well, we, we can, I can fix that, but, yeah, so I'll move the, I'll move it into the other code, or, yes, sir?
So, um-
So, sorry, Madam Chair, I thought we were just going through action items. Are we going through the P and L right now?
No, we're going through, that was, that was, I was just saying-
I thought we were going through the P and L.
No, sorry. We're gonna talk about the budget at the end of unfinished- We're going to talk about the budget at the end of unfinished business right now, action items. Because that was one that I just was trying to ask if that had been done, and it wasn't. ED to look into archiving the former commissioner's email.
We're still looking into that, how we can get that and still easily access them. But yes, we are pursuing that with Microsoft.
Okay. You were to investigate the actual expense for last year or for one phone call to a counselor?
And they have never given us, it was one phone call was, I think, whatever, $900. I mean, it was, I think that was one phone call, but I don't think Joanne has gotten an adequate answer. There's another thing that we're trying to get an answer, like the cost of the, for the levy, the cost of the election. It's not as, apparently as straightforward as we want it to be. I'll have her, I'll have her follow-up on the EST, on the, what is that?
Okay.
Employee advisory, EAS. The last time that we tried, it was, wasn't intuitively apparent how they determined that.
Okay. And have you been able to look at the cost versus potential revenue for the holiday close shutdown yet?
We, we did that with.
We did that last month.
Yeah, we did that.
Last month?
Okay.
We proved it.
The potential, the potential savings was like $3,000 or something like that.
Okay. I thought, sorry, it's just that because I see you so often, sometimes I think you've talked something with me and we didn't talk about it at the meeting.
All right.
So, okay, apologize. All right.
Were we still on action items?
No. We're finished with that. Oh, did you have some action items?
I did, yeah, because I was surprised it hadn't come up, because it came up so continuously last month, but I thought that's what we were talking about with N-WAC right now, was the swim coach travel.
Well, we are going to talk, we are going to talk about the travel fund when we get to unfinished business.
All right, great.
If that, okay.
I thought that was an action item.
Okay.
Nope, go ahead.
All right. So now we'll move to unfinished business. Chairman's vote policy. And the answer to that is Roberts Rules, Article 10, Officers Admitted, Section 58, says, if a member of the Assembly, if the chairman's a member of the Assembly, he is entitled to vote when the vote is by ballot, and then they talk about you have blah, 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 and in all other cases where the vote would change the result. And I talked to the school board, and they said that their chairman also votes on all matters, not just to break a tie. So your chairman should vote. So.
I agree.
As chairman, I plan to, if I agree with the unanimous vote, I won't say anything, assume that that's it, and if, oh, shut up. And if the.
If we're the, instead of telling us how we should prescribe things, maybe just say it is acceptable, as opposed to, I should vote. I'm not trying to embarrass you. I'm, it's very, I know it's not intended to be, but it's very leading, and it's kind of.
Do we need to make a motion?
No. Because it is, we are going by Roberts Rules, and according to Roberts Rules, your chairman should vote.
I disagree. I totally disagree. The reason being that we have operational procedures in place, and if we're going to change them, then that would require a vote of the board.
I agree.
It's funny, you previously said that the chairman should vote.
And he's not disagreeing about that.
I'm not saying I don't feel that way. I feel that it should be voted upon, and I don't think it's going to change outcome of what's happening here either, so.
Okay. If, then somebody, does someone want to make a motion about something?
I make a motion that the chairman, vote count in all motions and votes.
Seconded through discussion.
It's been moved and seconded that the chairman's vote will count in all votes. Discussion, Commissioner Hoffmeier.
A couple of things I have here. You know, I feel like we're taking on something new here. It would have been my preference to have put the employee handbook and the surplus properties, both of those items behind us before we move here. That said, it doesn't change where I'm at here. The one concern I would have, if I were the chairperson, and I would have to look at Roberts Rule and see what that says, if I were the chair, I don't feel that I would vote in an instance where it would create a tie, just because I think it's good for things to continue to move ahead and get done, and ties seem to supersede that at times, but I am, I'm ready to vote on the matter if everybody else is.
Mr. Fort, do you have anything to say? Mr. Singleton?
I'm just going to go back to what my original echo point there was, is, you know, we've heard, and this is one of the few things that we can probably say we totally agree on, which is fine and good, and why this is part of the process. Don't look at me like that. But part of the thing is Roberts Rules can be interpreted in many ways, and we use the parts that we choose to use, like it, no like it. That's how, that's how this board operates. And so the practice of when we change something operational, talking about it so that the public is aware of it, and voting on it as a board, would, to me, be the only thing that makes sense. So it's not so much about whether or not, you know, what the outcome of this vote should be, it's really about the process that I'm commenting on.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the chairman's, now I don't even remember what the actual thing was, that the chairman's vote will be counted or will count in all matters, all issues. So would you, so would you recommend, okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Unanimous vote, and the chair votes aye as well. So unanimous. Next, executive director's goals. Did everyone review them? And I, the only thing I have to say, I put them together from Commissioner Singleton's and Commissioner Fort's inputs and my own, and so therefore, I think they're fine. Where are they? They're after. Oh, they're on the very back, very back. Draft, NW charity executive.
I know, my eyes were totally okay, not great, but okay.
I remember seeing them, but they're not.
You don't have it either? Thank you, I was going to make a comment. Well, I don't want to be the only one that doesn't.
Yeah.
You.
I don't have any.
Did I send them to you guys, or did you, have you not seen them until?
Just, who's the admin?
Joanne.
Joanne sent them to us.
Okay. I thought I had sent them to you guys as well, right?
You did, you actually did, actually.
All right.
Yours was the great ones, she sent it again.
I don't feel so bad, then.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Well, Carbers went in 24-0. Football, Wildcats, third seed in the playoffs, there we go.
I don't know whether I'm going to address it.
How much was that tax-supported levy that built that stadium?
It was somewhere short of $7 million.
That only supports the high school, men's football team?
And soccer, and girls' soccer.
Do they allow girls' soccer in that stadium?
I didn't realize that, we're on the record here, but I didn't realize that until I moved about a block away. That thing gets used every night of the year.
I can't make copies.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
There's only one copy, so you never have to use. Sorry, I'm not sure where we are with that, but.
I was going to ask, I was going to bring this up as a maintenance issue later, but I would sort of like to add it to the maintenance part of the requirements now.
Okay, how about if we start with each item, and if you have a problem with it, say something. So number one was identify a path to financial stability, including a timeline for completion and progress toward balanced budgets for programs with minimal, if any, funding coming from the maintenance operation levy to support user programs, acquiring three months' cash flow and sufficient reserves. And that's, and that's like, not necessarily achieving those, but that was my reading, that's like, what's the timeline and progress toward getting there? Do we think, remember, we were looking at these for both achievable and measurable? And is it the path we want to go on?
I think so.
Does anyone have a problem with number one?
I, I'm sure.
Okay, number two.
Since I have to agree to them?
Yes.
I actually do have something to say about number one.
Okay.
The achievement of financial stability is obviously the goal here, and in fact, it's my prime directive to get us there. But I'm not sure how this turns into a measurable goal this year. This, the way this is worded right here, it turns into a measurable goal this year. I'm not sure. Acquiring three months' cash flow and sufficient reserves isn't going to happen in a year.
No, no, no. Remember, it's identify a path.
Yeah.
And including a timeline. So your timeline can be five years out to say, and it's like, does it necessarily happen that it's going to happen? Things happen. I think everybody knows that, but we have to, the problem with, sometimes in the past has been, they haven't even set a goal and a path. That's all this is asking.
So if you will, for this one, sorry, I wrote at least part of it.
Yes.
It's intended, I mean, this one's actually binary in the sense of, mrr, mrr, right? That's the measurable, is it done? That's the intention.
So then one has to, okay. Never mind. Whatever you guys say.
Forever, infinity?
No, I, if we're looking at identifying a path, yes, but. Maybe I just didn't understand that, the way you meant it, is looking for a path. I read it probably differently in my mind, is.
That you have, we have to do this in the seven months it's left? No.
Okay.
That's, that was not.
I'm good.
Okay. It's just, we want a plan.
If we need to reword it so that, I mean, then we can certainly do that, because it's not intended to, you know, fix all of our problems.
Well, I think, I think right there, you're first, identify a path to financial stability. And you can have, you can have a timeline in there. The first whole thing without any of the bullets under it are adequate right there. I mean, the others would be addressed in the plan to get there anyway, so.
Okay, so number one is okay?
Number one's good.
Okay. And I forgot, I want to talk to you about the date for the executive director's review, because you and I talked about when we want to do it, and we talked about doing it in July, is that, is that correct?
He talked about it at the board.
Did we? Okay.
I think, yeah, I think this period, performance period needs to go through, from July 1st of '16 through July 31st of next year, because otherwise, you guys will not have seen mid-year.
Exactly. And we talked.
So then you'd be grading your performance on something you hadn't seen yet, so. And then you have to take my word that everything's good. Right?
Okay.
So, yeah, and then from after that, then you can go August through July every year as the period, and that would make sense. So this would be a 13-month performance period, and then after that, you're back to a 12-month period. It doesn't answer everything in there, but it's a good place to start.
So we're planning on doing it, when now the review?
It'll be through July 31st, so at the beginning of August, we'll do it.
Okay, so.
So number two, develop a 2017 budget that falls within 5% of the actual bottom line in June 2017, that is balanced or surplus at the end of the year. And that was, I picked a number, 5%. It's like.
And I think that's, I think that's not forgiving enough to be quite frank with you. That's my opinion.
Okay. And that's why I put it in there. So what do you want, 10%?
I guess I'd probably side with what's, what's a business best practice.
Okay.
And I, I'm saying I'd side with whatever that is.
Okay, I was amazed, I have no clue.
I can, I can Google the interweb, and we can all Google the interweb, or.
Hello, may I offer?
Yes.
If you're talking about having a budget that's at 5% of the actual bottom line in June, I don't, that can't happen. It couldn't happen in any year, because the expenses and the revenue aren't linear. If it was linear, then I could, in June, you could say, all right, you're here where you're supposed to be, but remember levies come, the main chunks of levies come opposite sides of the year, so in June, it might look like insurance, C I W, you're a 0% of, well, that doesn't come due until December, and some of those things. So where I think the 5% number you have in there is something to shoot for would be at the end of the year. So it wouldn't occur in this next cycle, but if you go the budget on our budget cycle, calendar year, then come in the following summer, you would now have something to go, all right, well, last year's budget, you were X, whatever X is.
So remove this from this set of goals and think about it for next, the next set of goals for you.
You could do that, or you could, or you could say that by the end of, no, it wouldn't matter. What I'm saying is, the '17 budget needs to run its course, and then at the end of the time, you could have something like, where you might say that barring any major incident, that you don't have more than a 5% deficit.
Okay.
Or something like that. And I don't know how you set a goal for, we all, obviously, with profit, but there's, a lot of things can happen, and that would be well beyond the control of anyone, yes, sir?
So, again, for the last five years, we've overrun the budget every year, and had to take money, I guess, out of reserve to cover that, well, we didn't. So that's where I think we'd like to get to a point where the budget, more or less, that we planned for the beginning of the year, more or less equals what we come up at the end of the year, without having to take from this diminishing reserve fund.
No, I agree with you there. I think the reserve was diminished because of all the lawsuits. That was the prime thing that diminished the reserve, because the reserve's like a savings account. You get a paycheck over a year, you throw money in a savings account, at the end of the year, you have money in the savings account if you didn't touch it. That's kind of the reserve thing, right? So the budget is independent of the reserve. The reserve is a line item in the budget, but the execution of the budget is independent of what's in the reserve, except for reasons to pull it out, to do something that would be, you know, for this, like last year, this past year. We were at a point where two times I had to make payroll, so I had to go hit the reserve because cash flow wasn't there. And.
And I'm talking about the end of the year, not during the year. I understand that you have to do that during the year, because the levy and so on and so forth doesn't match up.
So at the end of the, at the end of the year, you can have a, and I would, I would, I will have a goal to, how much are we growing that by? Because I think that goes back to the first thing, the growth, the three months' cash flow is really what's in the reserve. The cash flow is, I mean, if I have three months' cash flow in the M and O, that's good, but I really need three months' cash flow in the reserve, and our cash flow here averages about 70, maybe up to 80,000 a month, depends on which time of the year it is. So the growth goal there is to grow that to $210,000, and then continue to grow it on. So whenever you have a boiler go, and I have to spend $60,000, we're not impacted. It'll, but that will impact the budget, because the budget line item might have only been $20,000 for maintenance, and I just spent $80,000. So you see the difference there? The budget's blown from a puts and takes thing, but you've got the money in reserve to cover it, so you're not.
But it shouldn't be blown every year.
No, I agree with you, as long as nothing untoward happens maintenance-wise or otherwise, yeah.
I mean, that should be factored in. Planned obsolescence of the building should be factored into the budget.
And that's the next item.
Yeah.
Okay, so going back to the, right now, what I'm hearing is that it can't be measured until the end of 2017, so we'll consider that in August next year to be a goal for, that at mid-year, we'll look and see. So, and we'll talk about it, because again, like you said, things happen, and so maybe, maybe it's not a valid goal.
In some way, though, and I agree with Commissioner Fort, in some way, the budget execution is a measurable, that's probably the only real measurable thing that's in here, it's what do we, what's the measurement, what's the metric we're looking for?
Okay.
In there, is really what we.
More or less, more or less, we spent what we thought we were going to spend at the beginning of the year, at the end of the year.
And even with a, I know you know this, but even with a planned obsolescence, comprehensive plan that Matt and I are going to put together, a boiler could go out five years ahead of time, and that's an unplanned attempt.
Granted, that's why we get the $210,000 reserve buildup. That's part of the budget, the reserve.
Okay, and again.
The annual reserve increase should be part of the budget.
That's the next item. So, number three, develop a comprehensive maintenance plan schedule which includes ongoing maintenance and planned obsolescence of building and equipment in the annual budget, more ongoing preventive maintenance such as rust control and painting, monthly reports of accomplishments to the Board of Commissioners, regular meetings. And you're already doing monthly reports, so yay.
Yeah, I'll bring up the, my maintenance issue with the staff reports.
Okay. Did you have any problems with the maintenance?
Well.
Number three?
No, no, I, the plan, I can have my June, well, I'll have it before then, a comprehensive maintenance plan, I can have that in there. As for ongoing preventative maintenance, that's a day-to-day operational thing, that's not a policy thing, that's just a day-to-day operational thing. Monthly reports are not intended to be activity reports. They're, they are designed to communicate from the staff, things that we feel the commission needs to be aware of. There's not, they're not meant for me to go, every day of the week, this is what I'm doing and giving it to you. And that's what this, that monthly reports of accomplishments, that's what that reads like.
Oh, that's specifically the maintenance issue, which you're currently giving to us? That's, that's all we want.
But having a, of the broader goal of having a comprehensive plan to the board no later than June at the June meeting, which I planned to have it earlier, I think is a doable and in fact achievable and should be a goal, yes.
Okay.
Then perhaps measure, if perhaps we, you know, pick an earlier time. Because that's, the thing in here is, is some of these could actually have dates prior to next June or July, right?
I, I'm sorry. So if you want to have a, have a conference plan delivered by when?
End of the year, is that?
I won't start it until January anyway.
Okay, well, then probably not end of the year. I mean.
No, but if you wanted to say, if you wanted to say at the April meeting, I could, I could commit to an April meeting on that. Because that's going to take time, it's going to take a lot of time for Matt and I to go through each, what we consider to be everything that needs to be considered into all this and then figure out the obsolescence schedule and all the things we want to do. And it's not a, I don't think this is a one-month, I mean, if we sat down and eight hours a day for one month, I bet we could do it, but we don't have that luxury.
And I would say that the, it should also, the comprehensive maintenance plan schedule should also include that ongoing maintenance and, the ongoing maintenance, because if something happened to Matt, we need, there needs to be a list so that somebody taking his place is not going to be like, huh, what do I do?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I brought up some issues in the past about the rust under the lifeguard stand there and the rust at the base of the, that's holding up the beams and so on and so forth, those metal. So I intend to hold that as a measure of, I think it can be accomplished, you know, a little bit can be accomplished every week. You can paint the base of that thing, you can paint the base of those things, clean the rust off. It doesn't all have to be done at once, but we should, we should, at the end of the year, we should be able to say, yes, this got, the room got painted, this, this, something else got taken care of. There's a lot of maintenance issues that go on that are sort of daily or weekly things that need to be taken care of, not just every, each, every, end of every year will be empty the pool. So that's my idea of ongoing maintenance. And so I will, that will be a measure that I will hold you for at the end of the year.
I have to agree to any measure you hold me to.
Okay, thank you.
The board.
Oh, no, I have to agree to any measure.
Well, I'm just saying, well, I, I get to vote, you know, at the end of the year, and so that's just one of the things I'm going to be looking at.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on the maintenance plan schedule?
Yeah, on that same thing, I just wanted to concur with what you said there, that I think, you know, a procedural manual or a pass-down law could be very important. You know, if somebody were to get sick or take another job or, who knows? You know, even if you have a case for a couple of weeks, you know, it can be really handy, just seeing what the day-to-day operations are even. Another thing is, you know, I, I know a lot of us sitting on the board here, on a good month, you know, maybe we're here two, three hours, you know, I get that. So it's really hard to see what goes on. I wonder if it might not be beneficial to, to not only the board, but maybe the director and the maintenance department as well, if, if there was some kind of way for us to, to see what a typical month or a two or three month period looks like for them of, maybe where we could see, you know, what was done and that it took two hours this day, you know, one hour to fix this. It might, it might give us a better vision, just so we stop questioning it so much. I just, just an idea.
It is, and you don't want to do an activity report and I get that, so think about it. But it's.
But I'd like to address it.
Okay.
You're free to ask us anything that's, that's being done or whatever. But if I was, for the various times of the day that Matt comes through here, for him to keep track of everything he does, all the PMS, the things he has his guys do at night for him, whenever they're doing the cleaning crew, that would, that would create an administrative challenge that I don't know how, it's not that I'm, that I don't want you guys to know what's going on here, that's certainly not it at all. But to have, but to have to keep track of every time we change a screw and every time we did this and.
And I wasn't, I wasn't necessarily suggesting we track it like the Navy would or like, you know, maybe like a Forest City does even to where a 10-minute light bulb is still a work order. I wasn't saying that, long-term. But maybe for, maybe a one-month window, maybe, maybe that would be a good thing, just so people knew.
What I, what I would really like to have, and I'm, I'm still researching it, is some sort of trouble ticket system that I, that I can have that would allow anyone to go, and then it goes, and then Matt pulls it up and it gets dealt with.
And that would be very similar to what, what Forest City or somebody like that would use, like a Lindsay software program. I don't know what else is out there, but.
I'm fine with it.
Yes, exactly. There's got to be something else.
Okay, that's a good idea.
So are we going to put a date of April on that? This, it doesn't, not everything else, you know, we're not expecting delivery of everything at the, on the, you know, at the end of July, right? So if he feels he can meet April, then I would say, let's do it in April, because I think for any and all of us, I think the sooner the better. And I know you as well, it's, it's really a matter of capacity.
Well, for me, it gets it behind us and then
Yeah.
the comprehensive plan could become somewhat of a pass-down law for, if Matt was to leave or whatever.
Absolutely.
If someone else had to come in, it could become that, so, yes.
Okay, so number three, develop a comprehensive maintenance plan/schedule for delivery at the April board meeting, which includes, and then the things it includes.
Okay.
Okay, does anyone else have, do you have any? Okay. Number four, develop a strategic plan for non-swim-related new programs.
All right. In year two, which is 17, is the year that, now that I've had a year of discovery and there's always more discovery to go, that was the plan to begin looking outside of aquatics because I really think, while we can grow aquatically to some degree, we're limited by operating hours and pool space and stuff like that, so we have to look at that. But while I can, I can have ideas and stuff like that, that, this one here, a strategic plan is really something that I think is a dual effort between the commission and the staff here and the community for that matter too. What is, what does the community want to go, where do they want to go, what do they want to see here? How do we, and build, like we've talked about, how do we build a community? So I don't know that this really is something that's a measurable thing, this is a discussion that goes on and then once we decide where we want to go, then I think we have now something that's a measurable goal. But right now, this is really, in my view, the number four is a series of discussions that we should have as we start identifying, where do we go outside of the water?
Then you should start having those discussions, in my opinion, and, you know.
I wonder.
And again, I wrote that one, and, and the reason was, if we'd like to modify the language, totally cool with that, but I think part of it is trying to get us some traction and ensuring that there's a stake in getting us some traction. And, and again, we can, you can say happy conversations, but, but I think the conversations really have to do with, I mean, they have to be initiated from the staff to, for example, engage the public, right? So again, we can modify the language if we, you know, how, whatever, to whatever makes sense, but it's really trying to get us to start having that conversation and, and that's part of, that is, is having, I don't want to say an incentive, but, but really trying to move us forward and, and that that is, you're the driver of that, even if it requires something from us.
All right, well, then I can come to you this year with ideas for consideration on where, how we grow outside of aquatics.
Are you going to do it this year or are you going to do it next year?
I can start coming to you with ideas, but the approval of those becomes policy and that becomes you guys, right?
Right.
So, yeah, I can start coming to you with ideas and then the discussion can happen there, you know, like the first thing I think probably is some sort of a fitness center, but, you know, how we, how we do that. But I think, yeah, I can, I have, I have a lot of ideas, I just don't know that all of them are good.
And that's fine. Mr. Hoffmann?
On that same thing there, you know, I think, I think it probably does need to be driven by staff, you know, in certain areas, you know, maybe via a guest survey, you know, maybe they use the website as well. I mean, there's a lot of options there to find out what the public wants. With, with the recognition that we have a very limited budget and outside of the water, we have a relatively limited infrastructure outside of the water, you know, but we do have one major infrastructure park that's outside of the water that, I do wonder if maybe, maybe it's not something that couldn't be steered by the Clover Valley Park Committee as well, possibly. Just trying to tie several things together, you know?
Yeah, and you can, in your subcommittee meeting, if you come up with some ideas, by all means, run them through.
We'll do some, we'll work on that as well.
Okay. So are we modifying this, develop a strategic plan, are we leaving it in as it is? What are we doing? I didn't, I didn't.
Well, I don't know that we'll have developed a strategic plan, but I think it should be realistic.
I'd eliminate it.
Eliminate it?
I disagree. I disagree with eliminating it.
Oh, I know.
No, I heard eliminate it and then I said I disagree with that.
Okay.
I think.
But do we, what do, do we want to reword it?
Yeah, I was going to say, can you propose?
I think it could be hard to measure.
Updated.
Well, the, the measure part, though, Commissioner, that I, that we, that an idea or two or three have been presented, is this something that, is this the way you want to go? And I also, I heard about a survey from Commissioner Hoffmeyer, you know? That could be done and then from there we could maybe come up with something. But I don't think it's, I don't think we'll develop one this year, but I think we begin the basis of developing one.
How about, we want to say, propose non-swim-related new programs?
Yes, that's fine. That'll work.
Sure.
Non-aquatic programs.
Propose?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, one, one idea I've heard mentioned there is, why can't there be a walking path around the entire Clover Valley Park? I don't know if there can, or why there can't be, so, it's an idea. So there's people out there that have them, so.
It's not that.
You mean like the ones on the grade down to Coopville?
Yeah, something like that, you know?
I don't know.
Okay, so we've changed that one to propose non-swim-related new programs. Okay. Number five, conduct employee survey to baseline satisfaction and develop action plan as needed. You don't have any problems? Did anyone else have any issues with that one? Number six, improve program event promotion publicity. Well, it's kind of like, because we don't always, I think in the past, things haven't been promoted and it's just a matter of, is it being done, how are you doing it? So it's going to be.
Will I tell you?
Yes.
I'll tell you. Right in, there are two parts to this. We use the website, we use Facebook, we use in-house flyers, we use community distributed flyers, we go through the school district, we get stuff and they send stuff out, all the schools send it out there. There are local groups sharing things like Macaroni Kid, if you've ever heard of Macaroni Kid and all that. The thing we're having tomorrow night, Haunted Swamp, there have been at least three other groups, one is the Coopville group is the one that comes online, that have picked that up and shared it, so people that have seen that too. Oh, the, the local Halloween thing, whatever, the whole midway thing there, they boosted it as well for us. For some things, we can do press releases and we have, and so, I mean, that was a good, I learned that as part of the Healthy Island Youth Initiative thing. The Chamber of Commerce, the email list can, can be used more. If anyone here has used the bathroom in here, I'm sure, we have the toilet tabler that's in there, on the back of most of the stalls in the bathrooms, it's called a toilet tab, it's just a one sheet for each month and it's just something that goes, hey, this is what's going on in the pool, dah 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 dah.
So, so as we talk about this as a strategic item, I mean, are you, are you trying to, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out where we're going with this.
Yeah, are you, are you saying that we should delete it because it's already done? Is that?
I don't, first off, I don't know how you measure this anyway, but, but yes, it's being, this is what we're doing right now. And one of the things that'll help us with more consistency and all that is, I have pulled the QuickBooks function away from Julie and moved it to Joanne, so now Julie
Oh, okay.
will have more time in her Director of Communications part of her job, so, getting stuff out there for us.
Yeah, I think it's, I agree, it's something, should be concrete measurable rather than
I mean, that's what we're doing.
Philosophical.
Julie has talked about trying to get into Instagram, which we have prob, we have to worry about photos with that, but Twitter, I'm not a fan of Twitter, you know, there are other things out there, but these are the things that we do right now. Also, we share, we do, we cross-share with the senior center and the school safety presentations.
Okay, back to, yes.
I, I personally think it should be left on there and I think it's very easy to measure it. I think we can always do more and I think, you know, whenever that period's up, whether it's six months or a year, did we do more than we did last year? Because I think we can always do more on it. I know one of the, one of the directors that, that interviewed for the most recent opening, you know, one of the things he did was, he went around town and put sandwich boards up quite a bit. You know, I see the city, the reader boards for the Public Works Department, quite often they have stuff on there that's not city-related, so apparently the option to use them is available for larger events.
Okay, so.
So I would like to see it left on there just because I think it's very easy to measure what we were doing.
And I, I wrote it and I just wanted us to, to increase it and it's like, I still think it is measurable, it's like, are we doing, like you said, more?
But how, what's the unit of measure?
Yeah.
That, that I don't get.
What are we doing differently?
Enough so it works easier to measure.
Yeah, what are we, what are we doing differently than we were doing before? Because it, it used to be.
I mean, we, I mean, for, for me, I mean, he talked about all the ways that we market things and, though those ways may work great, I haven't seen a single one of them and if I wasn't on the board, I wouldn't know about anything such as the haunted swamp. So I guess for me, once I start seeing things wherever I'm at, it's easy for me to measure.
I, I'm not disagreeing with it as a measure, but, I mean, but, but what I just heard is per, is one of two things, either perception and, and that's like, okay, well, so what if, you know, well, I happened to have been out of town and this and that and whatever, whatever, but I didn't see anything, so you probably didn't do a very good job. Not really the most objective, and, and I'm not saying anyone would do that, but, but not really the most objective assessment. Or the alternative to that, these are the only things I can see, but someone, please feel free to chime in, would be, tell us all the ways, just like he kind of did, but for everything. And I don't think that that is a productive use of his time or of any of our staff's time that we know are overloaded. So I, I don't disagree with it entirely as a thing, I just, but, but I don't see how you measure it. That's.
I think, even though it may be hard to measure, I think it should be on there. And being that it's harder to measure, you know, it would be hard to, to hold, if we felt there was a lack of growth there, it would be hard to hold that against somebody, I guess, but I would still like to see it there. And I think with having it there, it forces growth.
But I think at the end of the day with that one, again, I, I think it might need to be, if anything, if it's, if it's desirable, I think we have to rethink it because it's, if it's not something that can be measured, he can say, I did an excellent job. And we can say, I don't think that you did. And we can't ever reconcile the two.
Do you have any suggestions that may?
I, I don't, I, that, that was the only one that I was just like, I, I get it and I actually do value it, but I don't know how you do it. I mean, I think, I think if anything, you have to look at, it would have to be more of either something like increased attendance, although we know that there are other variables to that, right? So, I mean, you'd have to do it based on something like that or, sorry, I had another one and I took, or our, our favorite, which, which is looking at, would be more, less around promotion, but more around an event P and L. around an event P and L, and that's, and that's a little more messy than what we're really talking about right now. Right? So, those are the only things I could come up with in that arena, but I don't know that they actually achieve what, what this intends.
Yeah, and that is a problem, because you, I, I don't know, to me, it was kind of like, I just wanted to see more, and more is being done, so I'm willing to just delete it, just because it's not, I don't think it's measurable, unfortunately. It's achievable. So, so let's just, we'll delete that one. So what I have left are, number one, number two is not, is gonna be deleted, number three is develop the comprehensive maintenance plan schedule for delivery at the April Board Meeting, number four, propose a non-swim-related new programs, and number five, conduct the employee survey to baseline satisfaction.
So two's gonna be deleted?
Yes. What we can do is put it in for next year's goal, for the, the 2017 budget that will be done, you know, in January. Does that make sense? Okay, does any, so this is the draft, Executive Director Goals. Does anyone have a motion they wish to make about these goals?
I do.
Commissioner Hofmeyer.
A motion that we approve of the Executive Director Goals that we agreed to here.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the NWPRD Executive Director Goals from July 2016 to August 2017 be approved as changed at this meeting. Any further discussion?
Yeah, it's not to, it's not through August, it's through July 31st.
Well, to July, okay, sorry, to July 31st.
Yeah, because otherwise that would be comprehensive of the month, and I don't know whether we actually need that in the motion or not, but, I mean, that's, whatever.
I'm just reading the title.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Nay.
And the chair votes aye. Vote is three to one, so we have to do it by chair. Commissioner Singleton?
Aye.
Commissioner Ford?
Nay.
Commissioner Hofmeyer?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So the, it is approved. And I will, I'll make those changes and get those to you, and I'll send out the cleanup, clean copy to everybody else as well. All right. Pool schedule.
In your package, you guys did-
I don't, I didn't see a pool schedule. It isn't here?
I totally don't see it.
I did not see it, but, but then I had the goals in mind.
You're closer to the back.
It is right in the back.
I, I did not get it. I did not.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So, what you have with you is a summer schedule and a school year schedule. The details are known, manager, you got this?
There it is.
So, and I had this discussion with Commissioner Holly and Hofmeyer.
Oh, there's the summer schedule.
In the staff view, the pool schedule is not really a policy, it's a day-to-day operational thing. So change to those are the responsibility of the staff to do. But while I don't consider it a policy, I do fully concur, understand, and respect the oversight function of the board, and our responsibility as a staff to communicate to you things so that you're aware of. Thanks, yes, sir.
I think part of the reason this came up was because we've had patrons in the past complain about the schedule, unscheduled changes in the schedule, or not being able to know when things are going on, so on and so forth.
And then that, that did not happen the way that patron articulated it. So, in the school year schedule, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna go over them here and tell you what the potentials are in each of them. So in the school year schedule, what you have, the only things that change during the school year schedule are when the high school swim team is here, not here, and then also the Skagit Valley in there. But when the high school's here, they have three lanes at 2:45, well, they, they're here in the morning from 5:15 to 6:15. So only 15 minutes of that would they impact lap swim in the morning. But when they're not here, they don't impact lap swim in the morning. In the afternoon, when they're here, 2:45 to 4 o'clock, using three lanes of the pool, when, when the swim season's over, in February, assuming they have a boys' swim season this year, I'm not so sure they are, but when that's over, then that, that time there would, would be a prime time for us to increase private lessons. It's also possible, I mean, right now, until 4 o'clock, it's also possible that we could extend lap swim a little bit, but right now, it would, it would be swim lessons, and it would probably fill, perhaps, private swim lessons that would go in there. Eventually, our hope is that the NWAROs, and they need all those lanes, and that'll be, that'll be a good thing for everyone. At nighttime, you see that seasonal rotation thing in there, on Tuesdays and Thursday nights. So the seasonal rotation is typically, that's whenever we do adults, adult swim lessons, that takes an hour of that time, and then, and we're working with Skagit Valley, probably winter quarter, we will see swim, maybe spring quarter, we still, we still see one or two swim classes. When that, when we can't fill that with either of those, like we've been doing, we put out, our one month we'll do, we'll make it lap swim. We'll see how that goes. The next month, we might make it open swim, but we will articulate that. The time off won't change, because it's really reserved for Skagit Valley and adult swim school during there. But when they, we don't have adult swim class, then obviously, it can be purposed for something else.
I'm confused, because I thought the whole point of this was, we came up last month, that somebody wanted an expiration date on top of this. We're going into something that, I thought the whole point was-
Well, I'm, I'm-
You're coming to that? Okay, all right.
Actually, I'll come to what you're talking, what you're talking about. In the summer schedule, the really, the only real changes occur in August, and that's because the NWAQ usually, other than the people that are, the number of swimmers that are in, going to the zones, the NWAQ stops. And that zone thing's really only the first week to maybe 10 days of the month that they would be used, and probably, since last time it was only one swimmer, and it may only be one or two swimmers, that's probably only one lane. So it would open up to lap swimmers, or we could actually combine lap and open swim during that time. In the last week of August, that's typically when we do the pool shutdown. And if we don't, and I, actually, what we're talking, what Matt and I are talking about this year, that we're gonna present to you guys here soon, is we might not shut down the pool for a week this next year, because we may not need to.
Okay.
And what, I'm coming, I'm coming to the thing here, but I want to make sure I'm thorough on everything, so that there's no, that, that, there's no mistake in what I'm, what I'm doing here. The lap, the plan for the maintenance is a few weeks right before spring, not a few weeks, a few days right before spring break, and a few days in the summer. So, in the summer, when you shut down for a week, you really impact revenue coming in. And I also impact the high school girls team, which, now, they have to go up somewhere else, and then quarters is getting the revenue we could get. So, that, the pool shutdown schedule, if we do or don't do it, is the other thing that impacts the summer schedule.
But it wasn't, we weren't talking about the summer schedule. We're talking about the school year schedule actually changes when, that was why we wanted it to go through the school team, and then there's, this should end like, in sometime in February or March. And then you have, okay, now the, the high school isn't gonna be, so here's the changes. Because that's kind of big.
So the, we would do like, everything else. When we do that, you and I had this discussion. Didn't we?
We had it last month.
No, I'm talking to Commissioner Holly. We had a discussion about this. Our intent is to articulate what's going on. So, what would happen, what, 30 month, 30 days prior, or a month prior to the switch to the summer schedule, we would say, this is the summer schedule, there's no change to it, or this, these are the changes that'll occur during the summer schedule. You guys, okay, we're good with that. Then prior to the fall schedule, the school year schedule, this is what we're gonna do. High school will run through February-
You're not, you're not understanding me. The school year schedule should have two different schedules, because there's the time when the high school is swimming in the pool, and there's the time when they're not swimming in the pool.
And the only change to that is what goes in that block?
Yes. We just want to see it. That's all. And it should have a date, this is gonna go till, you know, when the high school stops swimming, because they kind of take up a lot of blocks.
Now it's sort of open, isn't it?
Yeah. It's a, to me, it's a big change, when the high school's not in there. And the, and the reason we want to see it is because we get the, we get the emails from people that are cranky about the, the schedule. I just want to be able to say, schedule hasn't changed. Really.
Of course, it could go on Facebook, but they don't.
Commissioner Hofmeyer.
I feel like I'm in the Twilight Zone some days, but I, I'm glad the Director respects our oversight of this. But, you know, I think with, with the schedule, you know, you're not, it's not just deciding what the, the staff does with their day here. It's, essentially with the schedule, we're, we're deciding which groups of people we want to serve at different points in time. And like Commissioner Holly said, we, we get the cranky emails, and, you know, I, I certainly think it's a policy matter myself, but we can respectfully disagree on that. But it would be nice to move ahead on this item.
Okay. We were just, we were just gonna look at it, that's all. So.
Well, next month, I'll bring you a spring, the spring schedule, which is what happens in our high school. It's out.
Thank you. Okay, anyone have anything else on the schedule?
I just renew, I mean, I'll say the exact same things as the last month, which is, I think that as a matter of policy, I mean, we have, the practice has been that we've approved it for, however long. I, I realize nobody else responded to this last month. I'm just, I-
You want to make a motion?
No, I'm, I just want to finish what I'm gonna, what I'm saying, honestly, which is, I, I think that if we were going to change that, I think there should have been a discussion about it. I still renew my, I think there should be an expiration date. It's, it's similar to a ferry schedule, in that respect, and so if I pull this out a year from now, I, I ought to know that it, it probably expired. And for that reason, you know, and, and as well, when we're making changes, you know, one of the things that we hear the most, or at least that I hear the most from people, is that they don't understand, I mean, it's, I know it's complex, but that people, those are the complaints, or I didn't know special events were going on, I didn't know that my regular activity was being interrupted. And so I think, I think we have to, you know, I think, for me, the question that this can be, which is part of why we're trying to represent it, and represent what we're hearing from people, as well as, you know, how we do special events. I mean, I, I know that we're trying different things, or at least I believe that we are, in terms of, of how we communicate that, but I, I think we're still not quite there. So, I still go the same way.
I think we beat this to death, and we, and I don't want to talk about this again. So I would like to bring up a motion, I would like to make a motion that we vote to, I, I make a motion that we vote, the reason is, let's vote on it, get voted down, and we don't have to talk about this again. May I make a motion that we, we have an expiration date on each calendar, swim team calendar.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we put an expiration date on the swim calendar. Discussion. Any further discussion?
Just clarification, you meant the, the pool schedule, correct?
Pool schedule, yes, I'm sorry.
Is that what I said? Well, yeah, he said swim team, and I'm sure that the motion was clear.
Sorry.
Pool schedule, yeah.
Pool schedule.
Looking at this thing.
Any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we should have an expiration date on the pool schedule. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair agrees. So it is unanimous decision to have a expiration date on the pool schedule. Thank you. All right. NWA travel fund, 26, part of the 2016 budget. Why did we have to discuss this?
I think it's gonna come back to us.
Oh, who are gonna come back to us with, on how we're gonna, how we're gonna fund this through the end of the year, or is there sufficient money? What's, what's the deal?
Well, again, this was something that I thought we were gonna talk about in the meeting, so we could do that. I can speak to this, but in the subcommittee meeting that we had canceled. So, you know, last month, I think I, there was, my misunderstanding was that there was a line item in there, however it was derived, there was a line item in there, and that's what the expect travel expense was for the year. So right now, the money that we collect is, our projection is, it will cover what has been done so far.
Okay.
That's our projection. That assumes everything goes right on there, and, and we have, the, the Boosters Club has been engaged, and they are contemplating perhaps contributing, there's no guarantee, some to the travel fund as well. So, right now, I am not reimbursing him for any travel until we get hold on the stuff, on what we have in the deficit right now. And he, he understands that.
Okay.
But we are, our, our projection is, we should get there.
Based on 750 a month for the next three months per swim team member, and assuming the summer doubles, so it's only 1250? Adding that all up?
Part-
Adding that all up for three months, that should make up the difference, I think.
If we're not there, it's, it's gonna be close. That, that, that's, that's, the rest of my discussion is something that's on a subcommittee before it comes out here.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, so this, this was more than just a line item. It was actually voted on last year by the previous commissioners, one of them who's here, and was brought up, it was a motion made forward by Commissioner Steve Hofmeyer, who emphatically said, and it was agreed upon by the rest of the board at that time, that we would not spend more than we take in from the Booster Club, or for the fees for the swim teams or coaches' travel fund. And, and that if it ever got to the point where we weren't gonna do that, we would stop funding the coaches' travel fund. And it wasn't just a line item in the, in the budget, it was actually a motion that had been made and passed last year.
I, I think he understands that.
He didn't seem to understand it last month.
He didn't, but he's seen the, he's, I sent it out, so you do understand that, right?
I do understand that, but my understanding was that I had a budget as well that I had to work with in there, assuming that the calculation that the previous commission came up with, that that was what that's generating, would, would meet the coaches' travel. So, the, the, the issue last month was, why are we over it? My belief was, I have the ability to go over it as long as I can cover it by the end of the year, and that seemed to not be the consensus, or at least the belief of some people here. It's, to me, it's no different than any other line item in there, that if I set a budget for it, and by the end of the year I'm balanced or ahead, then, okay. That's, that's where the, I believe, the disconnect last month was, and I wasn't the commission, I wasn't the Executive Director whenever the thing was passed, so.
Okay.
Sorry. So, just, yeah, just, so just to go, just to go back a little bit here, so I think, I think what we were expecting, and so it sounds like we had different expectations, because I actually thought we were gonna be talking about it here. I, I didn't, I was unaware that you thought we were talking about it in a subcommittee, because it was actually, it was related to our 2016 budget amendment, that's when we talked about it. And, and so what I, what I thought the action item was, was you were going to come back to us and tell us where you thought you could get to, or if it was going to be covered, how it would be covered. That's what I thought I heard. And, and so, I, I think, even, even if we said, because what, some of also what we've learned is, our intent and what we actually passed were not exactly the same. It's a big learning. It's one of those, be careful what you, be careful what you throw on. But, but it was a good learning. But in this instance, I, I would agree with you in that it is like any other item, and right now, our revenue, our expenses are, are heartily out, are outpacing our revenue, and so just like any other item, we, I think, need to ensure that we feel it's adequately addressed. We can add all the other stuff into it if we want to, but, but even without any of that other baggage. Right now, we're, sorry, I, we're about a thousand dollars behind. And so I don't see how it would be possible for us to make that up, and I, I don't think I'm being difficult or dim, I, I think if, if we look at the numbers, I don't think it's possible. Unless literally it stops now, and we continue to collect money, which effectively pays for travel that's already occurred. Right?
I'm not paying for any travel that you guys write down.
Well, okay, so, let's, let's, let's drop that one for a moment. Is, does he continue to accrue travel expenses at the, as a district employee? Because, because that's different from, I'm not reimbursing. I, I'm, I'm trying to be really clear here, not trying to, so from, I'm not reimbursing. I'm trying to be really clear here, not trying to, so that there are no false assumptions on anybody's part. Right? So is he still accruing travel expenses?
Mm-hmm. But he understands he's not being reimbursed until we have the money to reimburse him.
Okay. And I have concerns about that approach. I don't doubt that everyone's doing what they think is the right thing. And I think we're trying to do what we think is the right thing, because we don't want this to be an deficit situation, because, because of, even if we, what we passed wasn't what we thought we passed, including intent, and I think a lot of people in this room right now are in the room, including yourself, though not as an employee, absolutely. But, so, I still feel like there's kind of an undone, because this, this starts to feel like we're always gonna be catching up.
It seems a little vague in what you're stating. You're not being exact. Are we going to fund him, or are we not going to fund him? Are we saying that until we catch up, you will not be reimbursed for any travel expenses? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I told the coach.
And if someone, I think it was Mr. Merrill, talked about, it's possible that the Booster Club will reimburse some of, is considering paying some of those travel costs.
Can I jump in here, too?
Yes.
So here, I don't know, I think it was about two weeks ago, I received an email from the coach, in regards to this travel fund policy. I was a little surprised by it. I think all the commissioners got it. So that email's public record, as was when this policy originally passed. So, I thought I was probably wise enough to not jump into lion's den, but here I go, I suppose. The facts are the facts, and it's public record. I'm tired of being misled by several people here. I don't feel that the board should be misled, and I hope nobody's offended by that, but that's how I feel. Here's the deal. When the swim coach was talking about this policy in his email, he said that we didn't understand how it was supposed to work, et cetera, et cetera. And he should know, because he was the author. Everybody in this room knows that's not the case. And I don't feel like he's the only employee here being dishonest with the board. And so the hostility that was happening earlier in the meeting is certainly understandable. So I don't know how we move beyond that, but it was, I read it about five times, and it was pretty clear that I didn't misunderstand how, how it was written. So, I don't know what else to say on the matter, really. I just, I wish that I could fill it, that we were getting the whole story, instead of just worst-case scenarios, or best-case scenarios to paint, you know, whatever picture it is that staff wishes. That's all I have.
Okay. It sounds like no further expenses are gonna be acceptable for NWA travel, and...
That's not acceptable. Sorry, I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying, that's not what he said.
Okay.
The other thing is, I think we ought to, and perhaps you've already looked into this, but, I mean, we have, good, bad, or indifferent, we have an employee handbook that has a policy. And we have an obligation to fulfill that. We can't, I mean, unless, unless someone else has agreed otherwise, we have an obligation to fulfill what we've said we're going to do. Don't, I don't heart it a lot, but that's our new obligation. So, no, but, so, I don't, I, I mean, I think there's still, I don't think it's solved. But I, I would move that we, I move that we modify the 2016 NWA travel budget, or expense, to the amount, we modify it to the amount of expenses today.
Including the amount that's on the-
Whatever he's incurred.
Current, that's not reported, that he's gonna look into why it wasn't reported, the amount that was on-
I don't think we can, I don't, I don't think there's any way that we-
Hundred fifty-four dollars extra.
Well, and whatever else is included. So, it's a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we will, let me write this down, modify the 2016 budget to include NWA travel expenses to the amount accrued-
Today.
Today.
Which is what, the thirty-one?
I think, I think we don't exactly know.
We don't exactly know what they are.
Yeah, we don't know. If I can speak to it, the, part of the reason why it's, why I'm, why the motion is vague is because of the, the thing we got ourselves into with the last year's budget. Sorry, I'm, I'm reaching here, but where it was, oh, yep, that's all paid out. And so we modified the budget to meet what we were told was paid out, and it turned out that that was wrong. Right? So that's why I'm not giving a dollar number, it's today.
Okay. So moved and seconded to modify the 2016 budget, line item of the NWA travel expenses to include all expenses accrued as of today.
Incurd.
Incurd, sorry.
No, it's okay.
Thank you. I was trying to remember the word. Discussion.
Yeah, I think, I agree with Wendy. I don't think we really have any other option on this. And I personally feel like it's a policy matter to decide whether we're gonna reimburse an employee for expenses incurred or not. So, we gotta make sure this doesn't happen again, though.
Okay, so, are, what about further travel? Are we gonna ban further travel since it's not paid for in the budget?
Well, I think, I think we're saying that, from the district's perspective, that there, that there is no more money in the district budget for travel.
It's not, we're not in the discussion phase yet, right?
We know we are.
Yes, we are, we are. Sorry.
Okay. So, I would, I would like to, if we're going to do this, make that proposal, I would like to put a dollar sum on it, to date.
I don't think we know the answer.
I do. It's thirty-two fifty-one fifty-one, to date.
I don't, I don't think we do know that. How do you know?
It is. It's because I'm looking at thirty-one eighty-four thirty-one, which is the same as last month, and the hundred and sixty-seven twenty that's on this current-
My understanding is the coach is holding paper receipts.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay. Wow.
Yeah.
So it's even more than that, is what you're saying?
Yeah. It's not gonna be a lot more. He keeps his expenses down.
The, I think the only other expense he has is a Bellingham swim meet, which is just mileage. That's really the only other, it's good news. That's the only thing that he's done.
What would that be, another thirty bucks?
Sixty, hundred and twenty, maybe in the sixty-dollar range.
Okay, so I'll add sixty dollars to sixty, thirty-two fifty-one, and, and we use that figure. Because I think it would be nice to have a figure, rather than just sort of a guess in it.
How about if we round up to a not to exceed, or-
Thirty-three hundred?
Or thirty-five, and make sure we're good and done with that?
I, I, I frankly, he's, he's elected to stop funding him anymore until we've caught up. I think that meets the whole idea behind the, the notion that was made and passed back in October, November of last year by the previous board. I'm willing to leave it up to the director, as long as he's just follows what the, what the previous board motioned and passed in October, November of last year. Are you willing to accept that, Director?
I'm not gonna approve any more expenses. Actually, I don't approve or disapprove, but to answer Commissioner Hoffmeyer's thing, it is policy, and you guys, when you guys approve vouchers, that's when you're approving all expenses anyway. So, anything that would come through there would already be approved by you. We, I approve them to be submitted, you guys actually approve the final.
We can't, we can't default them. What, what we owe an employee, though, on expenses incurred. I mean, so we'd be handcuffed at that point.
No, I, I just told him that we're not reimbursing him. I don't, I'm not sure I know an answer to this question for you, because I'm trying to do it one way that I think is the right way to do it, but it may not be the right way to do it.
So was the, the motion that they put forward and voted on last year for limiting the NWA travel expenses, was that legal or not legal?
I think it was completely legal. But the problem was, I don't know that it was, it was followed, because, you know.
The language, so to go back to what your response was, is the language of the motion didn't include the intent, if you will.
Oh.
Right? That, that was the actual problem.
Didn't include what?
The intent of no deficit balance.
Yes, it was. It was very emphatic by Steve Hoffmeyer. You can listen to the YouTube.
The conversation was emphatic, but as Commissioner Hawley sent to all of us, the motion did not include that detail.
Yeah, it didn't, unfortunately.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it is what it is, right? Yes, I hate that saying as much as everyone else. But it's still, that's what we passed, even though you can say that there was a ton of intent that was clear in the room. And again, I voted against it. But the, but the board passed it. However, it wasn't the language that we've assigned to it. It just wasn't.
And this takes us back to where we were one or two meetings prior.
Right.
To where we asked the director to bring us a better, a motion that he felt was more enforceable, or, or the verbiage that he would like to see. If you can recall, the record reflects that.
Here's my concern with this. The way that it's worded, you know, that we, we aren't currently preventing him from doing any other travels, so are we gonna have to have this same thing and increase it later? Or are we gonna say, no more travel, that this is it for travel for this year?
Well, so it's, it's, as much as it seems, it came off the top of my head, in a way it did, it's nonspecific for a reason. And that is, if there are other funding sources, I know I'm being subtle at all, but I, I mean, you know, part of, part of what we're trying to say is that we, the whole purpose behind this is that we didn't feel that the taxpayers should have to incur that burden, right? That's, that was the intention behind it. And, and so it's, it's, that was all we were trying to do, and this should be a measure that actually does do that. However, I'm not gonna say, hey, I don't think the guy can travel anymore. If there's another, if he chooses to travel on his, on his own, then, hey, he's a professional. I mean, that can be a choice. If there are other sources of funding-
That's, that's actually what Steve Hoffmeyer said. He said they could travel, he could travel with one of the other swim team members in their car and come back with them. Steve Hoffmeyer actually mentioned that during the, his presentation.
And, and that's one, that's one example. However, if there was an alternate funding source, I know I'm not being super subtle, but I'm just trying to, you know, if, if that were to happen, I'm not saying, well, you know what, we, we're mandating that you can't do that. I think what we're-
No, we're not mandating you can't travel. You can still travel. He just can't get reimbursed for staying overnight, or for miles.
I'm, and I'm trying to, right, but what, but what I'm trying to say is that on the, on the district's expense account, that's, that's the point of what this is intending to do, if we need to change that to be more specific. Or perhaps there needs to be additional language, sorry, but, but there needs to be additional language about, unless there's a surplus. However, the difficult part about that is, let's say we end up with fifty-seven dollar surplus. Okay, well, just to-
That was addressed. That was addressed in the presentation back in October, November. If there's a surplus, it'll carry over to the next year.
May I ask, please?
Yep.
So, because we're trying to work toward the same thing here. And what I'm trying to point out is that one of the issues that was brought up last month is that because we started in January, then we didn't have a surplus of monies. And so what I'm trying to say about that is, let's say we end up with fifty-seven dollars at the end of the year. Well, you know, I think we can all guarantee that that would probably be spent in 2017, without even worrying about it.
Because it'll carry over.
Right, right. And so, so I don't, if I need to make it more specific or different, I can do that. But I, I don't think by saying he can't travel, that's not our call. And nor would I, nor do I actually want that to be the outcome, by the way.
He didn't say that. He said he won't be, he won't be reimbursing for his travel. That's what the director said.
He said currently he won't be.
Yeah, until he gets, until he gets more money from, from the swim team to cover his expenses.
Or until-
Seems pretty specific to me.
But, but understand this, and I don't know if this is what you intended, but this is what I heard, is, is he's not currently reimbursing him. Okay, but if we're, so just like many other things we've talked about, if we're this much behind the eight ball for a thousand bucks behind the eight ball right now, and it's only getting worse, well then, when we have a thousand dollars, he can reimburse him another thousand dollars. We're just-
No, no, when he catches up. That's what, that's what he said, when he catches up to our current expenditure.
If we're not specific about this, then we'll never catch up. We'll always be behind.
I agree. I agree. That's why I meant putting a dollar sign on it.
Well, legally, we can't exceed the budget.
Right.
You know, technically, we can't. That's, that's the intention here.
I mean, that's where I came up with this thirty-one or thirty-three hundred dollars.
Can someone choose to do it anyway? They could.
And you mentioned, you mentioned the beginning of the year, they didn't have any money. They actually discussed that in part of the October, November, and they said, well, we're not gonna have any travel until March or April. So, that's how that came about.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer.
I think we've pretty thoroughly discussed the motion that was moved and seconded. I'm ready to vote on it.
Thank you. Since other people are still talking, we'll make sure everyone's felt their say. Commissioner, or, sorry, Director.
No, no, I don't want your job. So, Madam Chair, one of the sitting commissioners at the time is in the room, and I would like permission for him to address a couple of points that he feels he has in this, if you will approve it.
I do not, because you, in fact, you have two sitting commissioners from that same meeting. So, and we've already talked. So, it's been moved and seconded to modify the 2016 budget for the NWA travel expenses to include all expenses incurred as of today. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, I guess.
That was enthusiastic. It's approved unanimously. Chair also votes yes.
I think specific is better than vague.
Should we ask a question?
No.
I guess you're allowed to, I guess you have to bring it up at the end, when we have open discussion.
No, there's no more, there's no more public discussion. Okay. New business, credit card fees.
So, I was asked to look at the, there we go.
Bye, Sean.
So there was a query on whether or not we were charging the NWA the credit card processing fee for the PNS pastors. That was the specific question. And that would be meat fees and USA swim registration. The answer is no. We don't. We don't charge a pass-through for anyone. We don't charge for anyone. So the USA swim fee currently is seventy-one dollars, which is average three percent, it depends on the card rates, but if you just average three percent, that's about two dollars and thirteen cents per transaction for each USA swim registration that uses a credit card to do it, vice versa, cash. At approximately fifty swimming, I'm just using the number fifty in here, I think we're close to that. That's a hundred and six dollars and fifty cents, which, there is a line item budget for credit card processing fees of about eight, of eight thousand dollars, I'd say a thousand dollars. A hundred and six fifty is about 1.3 percent. If we add the other thing I mentioned in there, which would be meat fees, we have a budget line item of ten thousand, assuming that all of them pay credit card for all the meat fees that they do, three percent of ten thousand is three hundred. So, in essence, you have four hundred and six dollars and fifty cents for fifty swimmers. The number isn't as important as, you know, the range that it's in right now, which is five percent of the budget line item. So I've talked to the staff about it, and we've gone around, and our field is that credit card processing fees are inherent to doing business in here. Most companies don't distinguish between cash and credit sales. Yes, there are some that do, but I rarely, I rarely see those people out there. We can't collect this money from just one group of people. So, or we're not, it's not equal protection, not getting equal treatment of people in here. However, if the commission wants to say that for all credit card transactions, we will have to adjust the price and do that, then I'd more than gladly do that. I mean, we view it as, okay, that's just the cost of business, it's a line item in a budget. If the commission feels that we should do that, it will, you know, we'll have to revisit the pricing structure, let's figure out, well, what is we wanna do on the things, and that'll take some time to assess. I don't know how much time, but it'll take a little bit of time, because, you know, all- of time, because, you know, all the different ways people do it, so we'll have to assess it, approve it, and then then put it into implementation. So it's really, in the staff view, it's an all or nothing proposal, either do it for all credit card transactions, or we don't, or we just eat the cost like we have it, yes or no?
Yeah, so I mean, did you go to the?
Yes, I did.
Okay, great, because, I mean, they don't consider the cost of doing business, they they actually do, do have.
Actually, actually.
Okay.
And I'm not sure how they do this, and that was.
Who are we talking about, sorry?
Department of Licensing.
Department of Licensing, which, that's where I.
Okay, there was a half a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I just.
They were mental telepathy.
I.
They have, they have, for online services, they don't charge it.
On online, sorry.
If if you green your 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 license online, they don't charge it, but if you go in the office, they charge it, now.
Oh.
I'm reading right from their.
Oh, they don't charge, that's right, they don't charge credit card, I'll agree with that.
And but if you go, if you go down to Pioneer, down there to the thing, and get your tags, they do charge it for it.
Yes.
And I'm not sure what that is, other than they're trying to collect the cost of labor of the person who's swiping it, because a credit card company doesn't do that, the credit card company takes a transaction, it's a transaction, it's a transaction, there's no difference.
But they take, don't they take a certain fee out of that, I mean, how's the how's the master, how's the credit card make any money?
They, each transaction they get, let's use three percent, that's the number I'm using, they just take three percent.
Right.
So I'm not sure how or why Department of Licensing, when someone does it online over the internet, they don't charge that, but if you come in the office, they do charge it.
I believe I may have the answer to that.
Okay.
And I don't know whether it's relevant, online would be the, you know, the state, the D O L state, people down there are contract.
A private business, that's right.
Well, it would it would be for the labor, for the person that's.
Well, and I think it's through the lost income for, I don't know.
But they're not doing it online, so.
Okay, okay, let's try not to.
I know, yeah, I don't know what they pay, do they, so they pass the full amount on to the, see, if they pass that full amount on to the state, then they're losing three percent of that, you see what I'm saying, they gotta be losing three percent, because they they're not getting, this credit card's not giving them three percent, it's not credit card, it's not gonna give, so, so that is a cost of doing business, so I would make a proposal that we that we charge every, we increase the fee for everybody using a credit card, that that's actually getting to be pretty much standard for a lot of businesses.
It it's probably hidden in a lot, but I rarely see.
Yeah, a lot of.
This price for this, this price for that, they probably do put it into the cost of it.
I know, I go to the dentist, if I if I try to choose a credit card, I gotta pay more, but if I if I pay by cash or check, I get a five percent discount.
Well, like I said, there are places that do that.
A lot of places.
I'm just saying that, you know, to to reference your request.
Yeah, you're right, online, they don't, and and you're right, I think it is, because online, it goes directly to the state, when I go through there, you're 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 going through the business, and they're reimbursing the state that amount, I don't think they're letting, the state's taking three percent less from them, though, if they didn't, so that's what, I think.
Well, they're they're not recouping it online, they're recouping it through the in-person thing, so.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions there on that, too, and I I don't know what the answers are, so, you know, if, so if it was a five percent discount, then you you caused a lot of people to pay with cash, you know, um.
Sure.
What is the, or 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 check, you know, what is the, what what's the additional cost to staff of handling that money and having to take it to the bank and and all that stuff, that's always a question worth asking, I guess, and then.
I can't believe.
Second question would be, if if you had a policy that caused large amounts of cash to be on hand, you know, is there any additional safety concerns at nighttime, et cetera, but just a few questions that I've that I've always had with that, and I I keep waiting, there there actually is one, in Spokane, there's a gas station in Spokane I went to, they don't accept cash, cards only, so, that's becoming kind of common.
That might be for the cash on hand, not to get robbed.
That's exactly what it is, yes, so.
So, there are two of us that deliver money over to the bank, and that's Joanne and me, I do it on Tuesdays, she does it on Thursdays, so we, I make the run over to the bank, make the deposits, the cap, the cashier, cash receipts, the receipts from the forecast.
As as much as I don't like fee increases, and I've talked about that several times, but if it was something that was eating us alive, maybe a one percent increase across the board makes more sense, I, like I said, I don't have the answers, just some questions I had on it.
But your recommendation is to leave it as is, and not.
Yes, and and then if we want to look at this for the eighteen budget, I, then we can reassess it for the eighteen budget, but right now, I'm waiting on M W R, I mean, I don't, I don't know how many, I don't know what what that impact would be, does M W R, well, no, because the, there are people that, I mean, I know Commissioner Ford comes in, he always pays cash for his part of the, his swim there, so, two dollars and fifty cents is the threshold that we'll accept a credit card, so there might be people that.
We accept a credit card for two dollars and fifty cents.
Wow, I didn't know that, I'll start using my credit card.
Maybe we should do something about that, but Wendy, did you, Commissioner Singleton, do you have anything to say?
I mean, how much, how much, you talked about time, employee time, how much time to.
Well, it might be logical to say there's a fifty cent charge under five dollars or under ten dollars or something, I mean, I think a lot of people would agree that's logical, and.
Or a lot of places, they say, no credit card, although then it's like, if somebody doesn't have cash, they don't have cash, so.
I've seen a lot of places, you know, forty-five cents under ten dollars or something.
All right, I, does anyone feel strongly enough about this issue, do you wanna make a motion on something? If you don't, I I say leave it in the hands, my my recommendation, leave it in the hands of the executive director.
With that, or we could make a motion to to look at it on the twenty-eighteen budget if that was necessary.
He'll do that, he already said he would, so, I think.
Be helpful.
Yeah, and if you're gonna do that, then give us an estimate, the amount we would gain by doing this.
Well, off the top of my head, with it, we're we're not, we we should be at seventy five.
Across the board.
I I think you mean at the time, when we're when we're talking about it.
Yeah.
At the time, yeah, at the time, just across the board, estimate how much, you know, we would increase our, add to revenue from for our budget.
Okay.
Okay, we are finished with new business, and the chair needs to take a break, so we're gonna take a break, sorry, if anyone else needs a potty break for five minutes, please, it's twenty fifty-two, we will come back at twenty fifty-seven, oh, I'm sorry, eight, eight fifty-seven.
Like crazy?
No, 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 that was first party.
Okay, and the meeting is called back to order at eight fifty-six, and we are now on staff reports.
So I think he does, he doesn't really, you don't really speak during this part, do you?
No, it's just a few of questions.
We just ask questions, right?
Yeah, questions, yeah.
Um, so I heard from somebody earlier, they said that we actually did make eight thousand dollars at the swim meet, and I know that was the projected revenue, do you know what we actually made?
Well, meat fees alone were eighty-three-hundred and something, thirty-four dollars, I think.
Okay.
And then concessions upfront, you know, to about seven-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars or something, close to that number.
And the expense was not very much, or?
Well, the concessions, there's an expense to the concessions, I am, but we always make a profit on those.
Yes.
But for the meat, but for the meat, no, everyone pays, that's what you do, you pay a meat fee, it goes to the host, and then, you know.
We don't have lifeguards on duty or front desk personnel?
Yeah, there are two lifeguards.
But they, we would be paying for them anyway, because they'll be able to swim.
Well, I know, but we, yeah, I agree, yeah, I agree, so that is an expense, though.
You're right, you're right.
So that should be that minus the expense of having the staff onboard.
Yeah, plus we also have to pay P and S, P and S gets their tax on it, so I think from a meat fee to P and S, we netted seventy-four-hundred, lifeguards, two for that there, and and the person upfront that we would cover.
And of course, we do have some lost revenue, because the pool's not open, so we.
Well, that's, you can't, that's a scheduling decision, I don't know.
Well, I know, but I'm saying, you know, that the meat fee sounded like that's a profit over and above what we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have had, but it isn't, we would have gotten some income from the pool being open and for for last swim. Yeah, I know, I'm just saying, it'd be nice to know what the net was after expenses and lost revenue.
Can we see, can you work that up for for the next meeting? I I just would like to see it, because I, I, you know, I think it sounds like a win, it sounds like a good.
I'm sure it's a plus, but it's not as high as they're they're making it out there.
I just said, I didn't say profit, I just said that was the revenue.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I know, but I would like to know what the net profit.
I'll do it as best I can, I'll do a meat fee, you know.
Okay, it sounded to me like it was definitely a profit, but I would like to know how much of a profit.
And Madam Chair, if I may, that, you know, is something that we had asked for for other program events as well.
Yes.
Meaning, just just so that we understand as a, so that we know the staff is looking at, but also we understand those events that we're having, are we, are we spending money, are we making money, like, what, are we?
Transparency, like was brought up before.
So also for next meeting, we'll want to know how the haunted pool goes, from a revenue viewpoint, and just, you know, participant excitement, but also, revenue is it, revenue neutral, which is fine, too, if it's if it gets different people in here, but.
And will there really be an army there?
Yeah, we have two staff people, and those are volunteers.
Can they do that?
Because this isn't a, I can't have them volunteer to be a lifeguard, because that's what I pay someone to do, but I can't have, they do volunteer for other things.
Okay, I got to get that clarification.
So, uh, so we're, can I go on to something else?
Yeah, we're we're on.
Okay, so I've got two issues, one was scuba, as I see that you're gonna be charging forty-five dollars an hour, does that, do we have a front deck personnel on that during that time, do we have any lifeguards on?
I have one lifeguard.
One lifeguard, so it's the twenty-one dollars, forty-five minus twenty-one, and so the net.
Eighteen.
Well, you'd use twenty-one like in January for the swim team meets, or for the for the swim lessons, that's why I was coming up when you were twenty-one. And so, so that's really, yeah, so we're we're making a little profit off of them. I have a problem, why haven't we received any money from them yet this year?
We have received money from them this year.
It's not on the P and L, the P and L shows zero, and hash shows zero.
I know he's giving them checks, I don't know why it's not on, I I'm looking at the line item myself, and I'm seeing it as zero as well.
Yeah, so could you please have that corrected by next month?
I know, he's delivered at least one check for, I thought there was one for six hundred dollars or something.
Okay, all right, great, thanks, that that makes me feel better about that, so okay, that takes care of the scoop.
He's got a, right now, he's got a contract.
Right.
That he's reviewing, that basically, it's like high school.
And and like we said before, it's a private, for-profit company, so it's not like, so they, we should make a little profit off of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, maintenance, for years, we've been discussing about, the roof needs to be repaired, it's leaking, you know, the current board and director have been on, been going for about, almost going on a year, so I think we now own any damage that's done to the structure of the building because it's not being repaired, I I think we need to move on this, and quit putting laws and saying, wait, this gotta happen, this gotta happen, the guy has been here, he said, we can't replace the roof, it's not, it's not a replaceable roof, but it can be filled in the gaps where the water's leaking under it, how how dirty is that water, because I was in here swimming the other day when it was dripping down into lane one, how dirty is that water coming off the roof dripping into the, you know, bird poop and everything on?
Ashes and seagulls, huh?
Yeah, so, you know, I would like to, I'd like to see us move and get this roof repaired, the leaks stopped, and I would like to set it, I would like, I was thinking about adding in a timeline to your, to the, you know, to these maintenance issues on your executive director goals, I think if we're not going to do your goal by June, July, or first, April, I thought we said, you said it was gonna be in July.
No, the ma, but the maintenance is, he's gonna give us the maintenance plan by April.
No, no, but we're gonna do his evaluation in July.
Oh, okay, yes.
So, I certainly would, I would, I would recommend that, that's one of the things I'm gonna look at, if it's not done by July, you're gonna have to have, explain to me why that can't be repaired. If it was my house, I would have had it repaired by now, not four or five years out, or it's not that long, maybe three or four years.
Well, it could also be, Commissioner, that we don't have the revenue to do that.
No.
Well, well, actually, I, depending on what it's cost to seal up there.
Yes.
I could, we could.
We're not talking about replacing it now, so let's look, let's push to get this guy out here and seal it, you're saying, well, we don't wear leaks, I think Sean and I, he's probably knows more about, he knows more about maintenance, I do, we could get up there with a hose and find out where the leaks are at, you think, Sean?
Shane.
Shane, excuse me.
Leaks can be hard to find, the water can travel a long ways, but a, a professional roofer should be able to find it in no time, I think it's just, you know, in the past, I kinda thought it was a matter of having a maintenance person here during business hours, when, when, you know, roofers are working, et cetera, you know, I think with our new policy, that's the case, there is somebody here during the day, it might just be that we're on island, and maybe some outreach needs made to people that work on commercial buildings, one idea I had was a spray foam like they used on the.
Yeah, that's what I think they have in mind.
And as far as not having the revenue, letting the building fall down is not an option, if we need a bond or a loan, something's gotta be done.
When I was up there with Matt, he pointed out these these shingles were, or these metal things were all bent up, you know, three or four or five inches some places, and they can't be pushed down, so that's where the sealant needs to seem together, it seems to me, that that's might be interesting if you would get up there and take a look.
It doesn't, I haven't been up there, but it does not look to be in good shape from Google Earth.
But I mean, you might be able to have a better idea of looking at it, and I'm not a, I have no maintenance background, but, anyway, I just would like to push, I wanna, I wanna get that roof repaired in the next six months.
I thought.
The leaks stopped.
My understanding, or, and correct me wrong, is just that we haven't been able to get somebody to come here to look at, but maybe, we do need to push harder, see if.
They did come here and looked at it, then they said, that's what brought, was brought up last month or last November, it's actually in the mix, the guy said it's not, the roof was not intended to be replaced.
Right.
Which means to me, I guess, it's not replaceable.
But do we have an estimate on how much to repair, or?
No, no, because he hasn't, finding roofers is is probably harder than finding electricians, because, and because of the mild, we didn't have a lot of rain during the summer, they're out making money, coming and doing something like this, and even looking at it, knowing that to to replace a roof, which was the original thing we were looking at for for the guy, I mean, that's a, that's a major capital improvement that would be a boatload of money down the road, but I did ask Matt to get him back out here, I asked Matt last week to get him back out here and look at it, since he believes, it's not that the roof can't be replaced, this guy believes it can, so I wanna make sure that we don't, we don't assume that he's, that he's, his belief is it may not have been intended to be replaced, but I agree, and that's what I asked Matt, what can we do to seal it? Because as much as I love the waterfall you have, and I was gonna charge you extra for it, you know, it's, I I I'm with you on that, I wanna see something move on, but in truth, Commissioner, it has been hard getting electricians and and roofers out here to come do anything, we've, through four contacts, and only one actually ever showed up.
I know, but we've been through three directors in years, and we still not getting anything, there's got it, and and you're right, you you're new, we're all new, but eventually we gotta start taking ownership, and I I think we've taken ownership, we now have.
The reason, and I don't know how we get there, but the reason I would support a bond or a loan or something is, if it had been done three years ago, there would have been a line around the building of contractors wanting to do it, and we could have done it for a third of the price, and that trend is gonna keep going that way, I mean, if you look at how many, how much old harbor's growing, and the way the building market is, the the one area tonight where I would definitely agree with the director, getting an electrician right now is darn near impossible, wouldn't we were lucky enough to both get the same one, but I I really think it needs dealt with, you know, temporary fix, and, you know, by the six-month mark, or April, or whenever it is, I I would hope that we we have a third-year plan put together off of it as well.
I I will endeavor to have a better update for you on if we're able to get, hopefully we get this guy, excuse me, Rob the roofer to, to come talk to us again, and and, I don't know, maybe, I'll go up there with Matt, because, you know, I've been up there once.
I'd be glad to go up there again, I'd, again, I think it'd really be nice to be[1748.66] I'd be glad to go up there again. Again, I think it'd really be nice to be had Sean Shane up there, excuse me.
I'd be willing to go up there with you, and no, no slight, no logo contact.
Somebody who knows maintenance.
I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna take a, a commercial roofer from the big city probably to, to handle this type of roof.
To, to replace or do that, I agree.
To even, to even know how to repair it, it sounds like.
Well, sealing it and repairing it are two, there's the other problem. If you seal it, what's, what are you sealing?
What was, and, and I would hate to do more damage trying to repair it, and I've, you know, with how, with how the building boom is here locally, it might mean paying somebody for an estimate, but I think that would be way better than trying to fix something and doing much worse damage myself.
Anyway...
I'll, I'll press on that one.
Yeah, so if you decide, if you and Sean, or you and Matt, and you have a time, you want to go up there, if you could let Shane...
Can that come along if you want?
Now's the perfect time of year, right? As soon as you get out of the water, we can go up there.
No, I'd like to go up there with Alan, with my suit on.
Because when you're talking about the roof, it is, it is critical to the building, and it's like, that's something that, you know, we'll have to find the money.
It's hard to believe it's not doing some structural damage.
Yeah.
I'm sure that it's doing something for that water to, to get to where it leaks sometimes, I'm sure. But I just don't know how, where it's coming in and how far it's traveling. So, but yeah, I would agree. And quite frankly, my fear is lifting off the roof, what are we really gonna find? Thirty years, I don't, how long it's been where it's been leaking, I don't know. And I'll face the fears, but I, I dread what will spawn.
If something collapses over there, holy moly, Matt, we talked about expense, I mean, the pool's gone, man.
Okay, any other issues on...
I have one more, number two. I'm, I'm kind of glad that the director, on the director's report. I'm kind of glad he had brought that up, and I'm real hopeful that, that's...
That's number two.
The one we deleted.
That's, that's a problem in town from, from Hillcrest to Clover Valley, you know. We've got, you know, here, here local, locally, we have a slew of schools that was intended to have four hundred students at it, not six hundred and fifty, which most of them have. It, it's a parking nightmare, so I'm glad you're working with them on it. I'm hoping with, with them realigning all the schools next year, that hopefully with having Oak Harbor be an intermediate, Oak Harbor Middle's gonna be an intermediate, and then this one's gonna be their junior high. That's supposed to relieve a bunch of the pressure.
Yeah, they have six hundred kids there, and it wasn't designed for six hundred.
No, I mean, four hundred maybe. I mean, getting your kid to it from school's a blast. It's a blast. But I'm hoping there's some relief in the future. If there continues to be that much pressure at that school and the other ones, they're gonna have to put it to one-way streets and add a bunch of parking or something. I mean, they've got some parts that's a potential.
Seemed like they weren't parking there today, or yesterday.
Three thousand nine hundred kids in elementary school right now, in five-oh.
Wow.
Yeah.
I just, it was, I don't know, my observation was, I didn't think it would work, but I thought there was fewer people parking there when I was here Wednesday afternoon when I got off, when the school was getting out than, than had been parking in our parking lot before. I don't know, maybe it's a...
I think, I think there has been some effect. There's been a lot of rumble on Facebook.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
There's some people that, it's the staff, you know, they're like, this is P and S, show some compassion for the school kids and...
Yeah, I know you were gonna meet that.
Yeah, show some compassion for the seniors that have to walk two blocks.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, what, what if you had to walk two blocks? I know you're a young chick, but...
I don't want to walk two blocks.
Yeah, right. I don't either.
All right.
I appreciate the addition of a unit of measure on the aquatics report, so thank you.
Oh, they did? I didn't even notice that.
Did. And it would be nice, I'm assuming Tyler's last name is Shell, is it Shell? Okay. It would be, it would be nice if we knew what Tyler did. I know we're not there yet, but it would be nice to know what he does.
We're almost there.
I know, but, but I don't want to take away from the glorious moment that he will listen to on YouTube over and over. Really, that's, I'm, I'm disappointed.
It doesn't, it doesn't say where he works.
What's that?
He's already gone.
Where does he work, though?
He's down in Seattle now.
I know.
But what did he...
What did he do?
He was, he was a lifeguard here. He filled in while, when Jessica first took over.
Who we talked about.
And she was one of the vacation.
They play them on...
He filled in for that week as the, and it was not a good week for a brand-new assistant aquatic director, filling in for, well, he wasn't a secretary, he filled in for her during that week. It was trial by fire from day one, so...
It would just, I, I wasn't sure where to be grateful that we had his contribution.
He, a favorite, he was a favorite of the private lesson people, a small school favorite, and then just a, well, one of the solid lifeguards that I...
I was convinced he was a cashier.
Good on his job recommendation for Seattle.
What's that?
Would look good for his job recommendation for Seattle. I'm sure you gave him a good job recommendation.
He didn't ask us for one.
Huh?
But I'm, I'm gonna mail, I'm gonna mail the, the thing to him, so...
All right, does anyone else have anything?
Nay.
On this point, okay. So I'm gonna read the employee of the month, Mr. Tyler Shell, he was a lifeguard.
This has been corrected from that one, because that was not really...
It is screwed up. I was, okay. So the employee of the month for September twenty sixteen was Mr. Tyler Shell. Tyler is a stellar employee. He shows daily what a committed member of NWPRD can be. He strives for patron safety and sets the example for our lifeguard team. Tyler is always lending a helping hand to peers and patrons, as well as easily adjusting to schedule changes. He's been an amazing instructor and motivator for our swim lesson program. He has a great attitude, professional appearance, and demonstrates what Northwood Park and Recreation District is all about. Thank you, Tyler, for your reliability, respectfulness, and dedication to the district and its patrons. We will miss you. Okay. No further public comments. Final board comments. Commissioner Hofmeyer?
I, I have none, other than if anybody, if, if any members of the public have anything to talk about after the meeting, I'm available.
Thank you.
Nothing.
Commissioner Singleton?
I was just gonna mention that we, we donated a toy soldier that will be painted or decorated adorned by, we donated to the district adorned by the staff and will appear beginning at the, in mid-November downtown in Pioneer.
Cool.
If you read about it in the paper, we wanted to be sure that we partook in that activity. So, that's all. Thanks.
And I don't have anything. The next meeting will be Thursday, November tenth, special